This retreat to really begin to talk about the strategic plan. And I think this is a perfect moment because the challenges of the years that we have been through have really opened our eyes to many weaknesses in the system, but also to opportunities and strengths. And it's a moment to really analyze what has worked, what has been done well, what should be continued, and what hasn't worked, what is a weakness, what, how do we address it, given our commitment to student success and to equity. I really want to thank the department for putting this meeting together, our facilitator, which Charlene will introduce, and all of you for participating and your input. I know this is going to be a rich conversation. And I hope also that it will not only be rich, but that we will be able to offer different perspectives. I think we're better off when we have discussions that include different views and different perspectives that eventually are all connected to our big goals of equity and student success and supporting our teachers. And I'm going to ask Aldi, before I introduce our Commissioner Charlene Russell Tucker, to take a roll call just for the record. So Aldi, please go ahead.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lopez.
Here.
Erin Benham.
Here.
Bonnie Burr.
Here.
Eric Clement. Alwood Exley.
Here.
Jane Gates.
Here.
Oh, Dr. Gates, thank you. You're here. Thank you.
Yes, I made it in.
Okay, thank you. Donald Harris.
I'm here.
Martha Prue.
Here.
Oh, Will Dariasco.
Here.
Alan Taylor. Okay, Malia Seavy.
Here.
Robert Chafry.
Here.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lopez, that concludes the attendance roll call.
Thank you, Aldi. Thank you so much. Charlene, I want to invite you as our Commissioner, leading this effort, to please welcome us today and sort of give us your perspective and marching order so we can have a very productive conversation.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Lopez and board members. Thank you. An official welcome to your board retreat. I was processing and thinking of previous retreats that if we work together, we would be really making sure our vice chair is all set and we'd have lunch. You know, so you would have started with a nice lunch. But we're here in this virtual space today and embarking on the process for developing the new State Board of Education five-year plan. And for me personally, and speaking for the department, it's an exciting opportunity to review what we've accomplished in accordance with the existing plan and to formalize our future goals and aspirations for education in Connecticut, not only based on the successes of meeting the past objectives, but most notably, the challenges of the pandemic, as Vice Chair Lopez just mentioned, where we've been and where we're going. As you know, together, we've had to implement significant shifts in education in response to the pandemic. And you know, we did this without any playbook. There was no guide. We made the best decisions that we could in the times that we, that we had, leading with keeping our school community safe. And it actually is still continuing, just based on conversations we've had today. So I've been saying to our staff and stakeholders, and will say to all of us, that we have this moment envisioned together. Again, no playbook, but using a phrase that you've heard, you know, about building back better. I think we have the moral imperative that we look forward into what education needs to be as, as we move forward. So the plan will be your North Star and will inform the work that we will do going together and eventually leading into, even through this leadership transition, but the department's vision. I can say personally, having lived through a lot of our comprehensive plan, that this past plan, you know, looking at equity and the work that we've been doing in the agency, it really guided the direction with your support for the work that we needed to do. So we certainly look forward to the next plan and how it feeds into the department's vision and mission going forward. So although you're meeting virtually today in your first official step, a great deal of work has been done. Thank you, Keith, who is on, in setting the framework under which the plan will be developed. And I know you've all had an opportunity to have some individual conversations with Dr. Lemons already. As you know, who is the founder and executive director of Connecticut Center for School Change. The center has vast experience and expertise in facilitation, in strategic planning, in equity, in stakeholder engagement, in applied research, in organizational effectiveness, and central office redesign. So we have kind of the best in an entity, and certainly in Dr. Lemons to lead the charge for us as we go through in building out. And again, I should say, they, certainly the center has a great understanding of the context of Connecticut's public schools with a commitment to helping districts realize their theories of action, and many of which the experience we know it brings into this work today. So I am pleased that we have him here, others who know that he's leading this for us. He's come to us highly recommended in doing this work. So we're thrilled that he's here and we're excited about what lays ahead. So I am pleased to introduce to you the Executive Director for the Center for School Change, Dr. Rich Lemons. And we will exit the retreat and leave you together. I'm also impressed that you chose to do this on a Friday afternoon. So, which is really great. But before I turn things over to Dr. Lemons, I know Desi's here, Deputy Commissioner, and I wanted to make sure he has his voice in the room for a couple of minutes as well before we move out.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Commissioner. I just would echo everything that the Commissioner said. And it's really a pleasure to work with you all. It has been a pleasure to work with this group and looking forward to putting together the next five-year strategic plan focused on kids and focused on outcomes for kids. And that's why we're all here and to have this work in the forefront. To be here at the beginning of this process is just exciting. And I just would echo everything that the Commissioner said, and also a special shout out to Keith, who does yeoman's work, making sure things move forward, and is very appreciative of the legwork he did to get us to this point today. And I would just, again, echo the Commissioner's words and say, enjoy. Have a, have a great retreat, and we look forward to implementation. Thank you.
Perfect. And the last, my last thing, Al is sitting here and she does it so silent and quietly, sending out all the emails. So Al, thank you very much for your work facilitating this for us. And with that, Rich, it's yours.
Thank you so much, Commissioner, Deputy Commissioner. I deeply appreciate the welcome, and it is an absolute honor to be able to partner with the State Board of Education, not just in terms of the retreat today, but in terms of a process that hopefully will create a multi-year plan, create the direction, the focus, the clarity that I, that I think you want to build on, the great work that's already been done in the state. I'm going to share my screen with you just to do some introductory remarks that, as folks are signing off. I will say, I'm also going to echo the huge thanks to Keith, who's been just an exceptional partner, kind of holding my hand, providing me some coaching behind the scenes, just to make sure that, that I'm ready for you and that we have a coherent process. Again, I'm Richard Lemmons. I'm the Executive Director of the Connecticut Center for School Change. I'm not the founding Executive Director, though I, as much as I would love to claim that responsibility, a lot of credit is due to the two Executive Directors that preceded me and the Grouse Dean Memorial Fund that actually helped provide the initial resources to launch this organization. I come to you solo, but I really come to you representing an amazing collection of educators who make up the team at the Connecticut Center for School Change. We have represented, among us, hundreds of years of educational experience. I literally mean hundreds of years. We have superintendents, deputy superintendents, teachers, principals, administrators, college faculty members, policy advocates, leaders of alternative education programs, just represented in the whole of this collection of professionals. And what I bring to you is, is the work of a team that helped do all the, all of our planning and, and our approach, generally speaking, to strategic planning. So I'm gifted to be, and honored to be able to work with them. It's a huge privilege. And I want to make sure that, that you knew that there's a powerful team behind me that's really doing the important work. Just a bit about the Connecticut Center for School Change. I provided a brief introduction in our individual interviews. But just so, if you didn't have a broader context, we're a nonprofit out of Hartford that has been for the last 25 years, working across the state and increasingly beyond state lines as we get more and more requests for services. We partner with districts and educational organizations to work with them on their leadership, their systems, their improvement strategies, all in service of great, better and more equitable outcomes for students. We do this in a variety of ways and a variety of services, but strategic plannings, but one of the services that we provide. I'm a big believer in getting people's voices into the room really early in a process like this. So in that spirit, before we get into the content and we talk about the agenda and we work through some heady topics over the next four hours, I've got a question for each of you and a quick process. So the question is, in a, in a sentence or less, how are you feeling this afternoon? So in a sentence or less, how are you feeling this afternoon? So why am I asking you this question? Well, one, I have a, I have a theory of action. If I can get everyone's voice of a team in the room early, that those voices are more likely to continue in the dialogue throughout the conversation. The second part is, as we know, that emotional intelligence really matters. We're paying a lot of attention to wellness and, and supporting the socio-emotional needs of students. And one of the things that our, our colleague Mark Brackett down at Yale has taught us is that being conscious of your state of mind is critical in giving you power over it, instead of it just having entirely power over you. So giving you the ability to kind of stop, ground yourself regardless of how your morning has gone, and just to check in with yourself and, and even just share with the rest of us, how are you feeling at 1:00 on this Friday afternoon in one sentence or less? So here's the, here's the, I'm going to call on one of you and I'm going to ask you to model it for us. Because if you, if, I promise you that if Malia goes on for eight or nine sentences or gives us a five paragraph theme, by the time we get to Bonnie, the retreat's over and we've only done introductions of how you're feeling. So this is just a quick. And the other thing I'm asking the first person to do and everybody after it is, I'm asking you to call on the next colleague that's going to speak. So we're not doing this by volunteers and I'm not going to call on you. So I'm going to ask somebody to get us, get us started, one sentence or less, and then I ask you to call upon the next person who's speaking. So if you don't mind, Woody, would you start us off today? How are you feeling in a sentence or less? And then call on one of your colleagues.
I'm relieved and optimistic. And I'd like to know how Erin is doing.
I am upbeat and looking forward to today. And I'd like to know how Awilda is doing.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. I am exhausted mentally. As you can see, I'm in my office. But, but I am excited to be part of this five-year plan, being a year in the commission. So I'm, you know, let's put aside my, my exhaustion from this morning all day and tomorrow, that I have another bigger day. But I'm, I'm excited about getting to work on the five-year plan.
Okay, Awilda, you're going to be my facilitator.
The next person is going to be, let me see, I'm going to select Estella.
Thank you. I'm elated because I'm with my family and also because we're engaging in this discussion. So I'm going to select Malia.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon. I am physically trying to come off a migraine, but otherwise I am feeling very optimistic this afternoon. And I'm going to call on Martha.
Hello, everybody. I think I'm in Awilda's camp where this week has been quite rough. But I'm excited to be here with all of you this afternoon and to get to the agenda. That looks very intriguing. And I call on Eric. Did he already go?
No, I did not. Thanks, Martha. So I didn't agree with Commissioner Charlene Russell Tucker that we all agreed on Friday, but I'm here. And, and, but I feel very, very fortunate and happy to be with you all and, and happy to, just to see your faces. And Karen, how are you feeling?
Thank you, E. I am glad to be here. I'm feeling eager in anticipation of the process we're about to engage in. And I'll call on Brother Harris.
Thank you, Karen. I am optimistic and making supreme efforts to stay upbeat on this late Friday afternoon. And I'm going to call on Jane.
It's Friday. I'm optimistic. I'm always optimistic and pleased to be in partnership with you.
I think you can call Bob Chafry.
You're on mute, sir.
Sorry about that. I'm relieved. I'm two weeks out from my last vaccination and looking forward to today.
Wonderful. Do we have anybody else?
Bonnie. I think Alan Taylor joined. Didn't he join?
This is Bonnie.
Oh, Bonnie.
I am very excited to end my week with a group of talented progressive thinkers.
Fantastic. Now, Aldi, is that it? Is that, do we have board members?
Yes, that's it, because Alan Taylor is so far absent, so that.
I think he's joined.
He joined.
I think he joined.
Okay, did not realize that. So I guess then Bonnie will go to Alan.
You may not know what the prompt was.
So Alan Taylor, this is Richard Lemmons. Good to see you again or hear you. And the question on the table is, how are you feeling in a sentence or less?
He may be muted. He may be, I saw, I saw him join, but then I saw him.
I don't think he's on anymore. He was there, but I don't see him.
Okay, I saw him in the participants.
Yeah, he was.
Can I just, Richard, we can't see you. Are we supposed to be able to see you?
You should be able to see me. I am.
Is anyone else seeing him? Oh, I can't see. I can't see everyone.
So I suggest to you all.
Okay, I can, okay. I can't see everybody.
No, I can't either.
Right, actually, I was going to ask the same question. If there's a way in Teams to see more than nine people?
So I'm going to, I'm going to coach you on how to do that. So at the top of your screen, next to a little sign that has a little emoji smiley face and a hand up, there should be three dots. If you put your cursor over those dots and drop down, you should see a large gallery view option that you can select, and all of a sudden it can, it can expand for you.
Got it. Beautiful. Now I can see, everybody's looking nice.
No, I don't.
So it must, must not be working for some people, but for, it looks like for most.
Yeah, I don't have that either. So you're going to see you're not the only one.
No, I only see nine too, Martha. That's all I can see.
Same with me.
Yeah.
So if you are working off of the browser version of Teams, it provides fewer options. If you are working on the downloaded version of Teams, it provides greater options. But the faces should move around a bit in the, in the process.
Yeah, so you see them when they talk.
Woody, I see a hand, emoji hand up and I'm checking in with you, whether you're, you're asking to be recognized or you just have your hand up by accident.
That's a mistake.
Okay. So thank you for sharing with me. And, oh, there is Alan Taylor. Alan, can you hear us?
I, I can hear you. I'm here as a member of the public since, as you know, I, my appointment status is unclear at this point.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So we're just going to, we're going to launch. It is an honor to be with you. And I understand from a number of you, you're actually wanting it to go longer today. I heard from several of you that you are hoping that we might go to 9:00 PM or 10:00 because it's Friday.
Only because it's you.
I'm going to protect, I'm going to try to protect you though from, from that. I know that some of you are just desperate to spend seven or eight hours on a Friday afternoon together.
I can't believe you're going to sit up there and tell that bald-faced lie to us.
I'm going to bring back up my screen and, and just orient us into what we're up to today and then, and then launch us right in. We're going to try to run an efficient but powerful meeting today.
Okay.
So you should be seeing my PowerPoint again, this overview of the center. And I'm going to bring you to our objectives for today. My apologies, this is small text. I realize that. I'll read it to you. You should also see some closed captioning going on so it provides a little bit of accessibility, but it doesn't always get the words perfectly. My remaining Southern draw throws off the, the closed captions occasionally. But basically, what we're trying to do by the end of our retreat today is develop a shared understanding of the strategic planning process. What are we trying to pull off? How are we going to try to pull it off? What, what are our various roles in that? And that would, in some ways, be part of the success. We walk out of here at the end of the afternoon where everyone gets, how did the retreat fit into a bigger picture? It's not just about the retreat. The second is, I'm very interested in, in us beginning to develop, and I reinforce beginnings, was a surface initial ideas and begin developing a shared understanding of the assets and areas of development for Connecticut's education system. I interviewed you and included questions around these topic areas. I'm going to feed back to you what you said, so you can hear what your colleague said and what the patterns and trends are. But we have more work to do. We have more voices that we have to capture. We have more insights we need to collect, and we have more data we need to review. So this will just be the beginning of that process. We're also going to begin a visioning process. We won't finish it, but I'm going to feed back to you what you told me should be the North Star of the educational system. But we're also going to engage broad collection of stakeholders in some rather big questions about the vision of the, of the state in relationship to education. And finally, I'm going to collect some feedback from you regarding stakeholder engagement. We have a plan for how to move forward, and we just want to make sure that we're posing the questions you want us to pose and approaching it the way you want us to approach it. So that's what we're trying to get to by the end of the day today. You have the agenda ahead of you, so I won't read this to you. But the rhythm of today will, will soon go into me sharing with you what I heard from the collection of interviews and then provoking conversation, trying to get you to respond to what you heard, to talk to each other with me mostly as a note taker in the background, and you having conversation so that you can explore those ideas, build on those ideas, identify any blind spots. Maybe there was something that you said and I didn't pick it up in the interview. I want to make sure we capture all of that. And then we'll go on to the next part of that conversation. So we'll, we'll talk about the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats of the state. We'll talk about the visioning process, using that same process. And towards the end of the afternoon, we'll talk about stakeholder engagement and next steps. I promise you, we will spend no longer of time than necessary in any one of these topic areas. If, if we move faster, we'll move faster. I, I know you are busy people and you've already put in an entire week. But I did, but I will also try to limit the conversation. If we go, are going longer, I'll occasionally try to bring us in so that we can move to the next piece of the work. Because in, and you'll see this, in the, the process that we are proposing and the process that's been laid out to date, we need some input from you to drive the next part of the work that we'll be doing offline between your meetings. So it's important that we work through some of these topics today. So I want to begin with just talking process. We could jump directly into what you told us about strategic planning, but it won't completely reveal to you, how do I think about strategic planning? How are we approaching the process? But it, more generally, our, our ideas as an organization about the value of strategic plan, but all, plans, but also why many strategic plans aren't used particularly well, and some planning processes are rather anemic and ineffectual. So we want to share that with you. We also want to share with you what you told us you wanted in a product and a process, and then get any feedback on that before we start going into the content of the work. I, I'm also going to, and I should have done this earlier, and I can't see the full screen without coming out. I'm going to put into chat, if you're interested, a link that will allow you to download these slides. That just might enable you, if you're working off multiple screens or you have a relatively large screen, might make it a little easier. But you, but I'm going to be walking you through and you don't need to take notes on any of this, and you will have all of these files. So, and if you're not familiar with Microsoft Teams, you should see now in the chat function of Microsoft Teams a hyperlink, and the hyperlink should take you into a Google PDF version of this document. So again, we have some small text here. I'm just going to hit some highlights. Is there, I hear a little bit of noise in the background. Is there a question? Okay, I'll just, I'll just kind of move through. So we at the center, and I think many of you recognize that sometimes strategic planning is done not so well, and sometimes it really can be effectual. And I heard that in the conversations with you. The, we do quite a bit of work with our educational organizations, and we've been working on strategy with organizations for over a couple of decades. And we see some very typical, archetype ways that educational organizations approach strategic planning. And I would put that in this far-left typical column. What does that look like? On the whole, strategic planning tends to be done as if all we need to do is fill out this form. If we could just fill out this template, we can, will be done with the planning process. And as a result, it sometimes becomes compliance in nature. District, states get districts to fill out plans. Districts get schools to fill out plans. And it often revolves around a power dynamic in filling in a template. And it sometimes gets in the way of some better work. We often see long lists of activities that organizations plan on doing over the next five, six, seven years, even if they can't predict reasonably that far into the future. They create these huge lists that are overwhelming in nature and in scope. Some educational organizations is that the plan and the process tends to be owned by a small number of people. And maybe it gets sold to people after it's developed, but two or three people in a district, for example, they lock themselves in a room, they create a strategic plan, and then they reveal it sometime in the future. And, and that becomes problematic in that, in the end, it tends to be the people who help contribute to it that have the greatest ownership of it. And often, we're needing to ask people to do some, do some implementation and to roll up their sleeves with us. And if they're not a part of that, it gets in the way. In many places, strategic planning is reactive, and it tends to look more narrowly about exactly where we are right now. And it doesn't forecast five, 10, 15 years in the future. It tends to focus on tweaks and marginal shifts. It doesn't ask big questions. Tends to focus on the needs of adults, sometimes lip service is given to students. But there, if you listen deeply and look into strategic plans, you'll see a lot of language around the needs and wants of adults. And often, the voices of students aren't represented as powerfully and at least aren't centered. The, in many districts, there's an emphasis on this product. At the end, we'll just have a product. Get us, get us the plan, whether it's a month from now or six months from now or a year and a half from now. And because the emphasis is on just completing the plan, there's a lack of emphasis on what happens once the plan is complete. And sometimes there's a lack of, of thought about how to run the process leading up to the plan. And the, the other thing that my colleagues at the center especially have taught me over the years is that one of the things that we pay too little attention to are the forms of capacity that will be needed in order to deliver on the aspiration. are the forms of capacity that will be needed in order to deliver on the aspirations that are put into a plan. We talk about the things we must do as if there already exists capacity within the individuals in the organization or the organizational capacity or the resources available. So we have to think about if we're, if we're really gonna pursue these aims, how do we build the capacity along the way? More atypically, we do see some pretty exciting forms of strategic planning and strategic plans. And these atypical approaches tend to spend a lot of time trying to surface the logic that's driving the improvement. So instead of articulating forty actions, there's a real effort to say, what are the two or three things that if we were to change could have a lasting impact? And how will that, that impact cascade through the organization or in our case throughout an entire state? There, there end up being a smaller number of high leverage improvement areas, F O C I, instead of a long laundry list. At the end of the process, educators and stakeholders alike understand and even use the, the product. It's not just owned by a couple of people. Tends to be more future oriented. Uh, the, there's an articulation of the strategy in a way that allows people to understand how the strategies get to different outcomes for students. They're not just activities divorced from outcomes. There's a real attention to how is this gonna fundamentally change the learning experience of students and young people? There is, uh, in some, and we see, we're increasingly seeing districts willing to work on this in the planning process and articulation of the systems that will be necessary to implement and execute the plan. So instead of just creating a plan that says, here's what people will do, we're done. The plan itself articulates how people will create feedback loops. Who's gonna gather data? When will people be coming before the community and saying what they've done and what the impact of those actions have been? And ultimately, and this links to the last, the last cell that we had on the typical side, is there's an effort to understand and articulate the capacities that will be needed. So that we're not just creating lists of things to do that are detached from reality. There's a effort to build the capacity of organizations to deliver on those aims. And in addition to that, we, we have some guiding beliefs about how we approach strategy. And these may or may not perfectly align with the board, but I wanted to put them out there because they will help you understand my frame and some of the questions that I will pose regularly through our time together. Not just today, but over the next year. So one of the guiding beliefs of the Connecticut Center for School Change is we have to do a better job of talking about teaching and learning in classrooms. And our strategic plans need to focus on the quality of experience of young people in the instructional core. Because when we articulate strategies that don't directly connect to the learning experience, often they don't change the learning experience and they often don't, um, they don't change the outcomes either. So deliberate effort to really connect to teaching and learning in the classroom. Uh, for some reason, mine has skipped past two. I'm gonna go to two here. You must attend to equity. Uh, it's our belief at the center that there is no such thing as, as an equity neutral improvement strategy. If we select a strategy and don't attend to its, its unintended and intended consequences with a lens for equity, there's a really good chance that good intention will translate into impacts that are inequitable across an inequitable system. Uh, third idea here is that we must work to articulate the, the clear chain of causation. It's not enough to say, we want to do A, B, and C. We need to help people throughout the system understand why are we doing A? And how does A lead to a series of results that ultimately get down to outcomes for young people and outcomes for the entire state of Connecticut? It's also important that you build capacity. You're hea, you're hearing me. I'm a broken record on capacity. But we have to, you, we have to build plans that overtly talk about the capacity necessary to deliver upon your chain of causation that you're articulating. And finally, we must design systems and routines that allow us to connect the, the, um, the work on a day to day, week to week, month to month, year to year basis to the vision. So, uh, plans in many places tend to get crafted with great fanfare, with great energy, often with great expense. And they get, uh, made very pretty by graphic artists and print shops. And then they sit around and gather dust. So it's really important that organizations figure out mechanisms that keep leadership and the entire organization in relationship to the plan. And help you, this is fundamentally about oper, operationalizing the work and implementing the work. And all of these things might hold a, a certain kind of, well, of course, um, uh, frame to them. And, and I think that when we present these ideas to educators across really the United States, we often get these nods. But when we get deep into the strategic planning process with educators at the, especially at the K-12 level, but also at the higher ed level, uh, it's clear that there, though they get these ideas conceptually, the practices of the organization regularly don't line up with the work. So all of that is a way of saying, that's who I am, that's who the center is. And, uh, and now what I wanna do is pivot us toward what is the, what is the plan as has been articulated in numerous conversations in the State Department, building upon plans of previous strategic planning exercises at the state and with the State Board of Education? And make sure that the plan that we're pla, that we're launching today matches your expectations. And if we're missing something, that we solicit your feedback in this. So again, lots of text on the screen, but if you pay attention to the large squares at the top going left to right, it's, I think it'll conceptually make sense. The language underneath just allows you to understand some of the smaller grain sized activities that will take place. So we're already into phase two. Today is phase two. But phase one was the work that Heath and I did to try to, you know, work towards agreement on a process, at least an initial process until you gave us more feedback, uh, interviewing all of you to solicit initial ideas about the state of Connecticut, but also to get your counsel and advice for me. And now we're moving into phase two. And phase two is fundamentally about, uh, delivering on the plan, planning for the retreat and soliciting your input that's gonna help move us out of the retreat and into phase three, which is about data collection. And fundamentally, not just data collection for data collection's sake, data collection with a heavy emphasis on stakeholder input. We wanna make sure that the voices of the state are well represented in this process. That's something I have heard from you in, as I interviewed you. And it's something that is, was baked into your last strategic planning exercise and I, I celebrate and honor that. I think you, you did a, a nice job in that process last time based upon, uh, seeing the documents and the facts of that and understanding your approach. We will, um, as of right now, our plan, and we'll talk more about this towards the end of the, of the day today as, as we're fine tuning and walking out with action steps. But we're gonna be administering a statewide survey. We're gonna be conducting numerous focus groups across the state with various stakeholder groups by role. Try to make sure that we identify the right people and ask the right questions. And, uh, and, and after that, we will carefully analyze all of the feedback. We'll identify themes and patterns. And then in August, we will bring it back to you for a retreat that we're hoping is in person. And, um, based upon some of the feedback from some of you in the room, the, the team's room, maybe not on a Friday afternoon. We'll see, we'll see what we can get on your busy calendars. And in that exercise, and in that retreat, the idea is that you will have a, an opportunity to work together to analyze all of the perspectives that you've heard from, from the state. And that you'll be able to, out of that, identify a very small number of goals that will help, um, drive the, the crafting of the plan. Uh, you'll give more concrete ideas about the vision, about the mission and identify a small number of goal areas, improvement targets, if you will, that can become the skeleton of a strategic plan. And with all of your input given on that day, I will go offline and work with the team to try to, uh, capture your, your ideas into a draft plan. That draft plan then comes to the, uh, to the commissioner and then ultimately to you. And I think that the plan um, of two thousand twenty-two. So that's, that's the plan in, um, in kind of a nutshell. And I wanna give you one last piece of information and then I'm gonna stop sharing my screen and we're gonna open up the floor and get your feedback and guidance on process. Make sure that, that Keith and I are, are working, uh, tightly aligned, but al, in alignment with your vision for how this should work. I asked all of you in our interviews, what did you hope would come out of the process? And what did you want in a plan? And I, I just thought that this would be the perfect time to share this back with you. There were a number of very common themes that emerged. You said that you wanted to make sure that this planning process and the plan that it produces is not in a vacuum, that it pay, that it's a continuation. It might not be the exact same work, but that at least will honor the great work that you've done as a board before. So that we'll, we will, uh, you, you challenged me to make sure that you paid attention to where we were coming from and looked backwards in order to look forwards. You also said that it to, it should, if it's going to have the impact you want it to have, it needs to speak to and be in alignment with other visions for, that have implications for educational systems in the state of Connecticut. And multiple times, the Governor's Workforce Council came up as an example. So if there's important work that is setting some visionary ideas out for where the state as a whole should go and those visions have implications for education, we need to make sure that, that there's some, um, way that we're bringing these together. The strategic plan of the board, but this other work is happening across the state. Otherwise we'll have misalignment and we won't make progress. You said, uh, almost without exception, that what you wanted in a plan was something big. You wanted it to be visionary. Visionary came up multiple times. You wanted it to have, as one of you said, big vision. And you wanted that big vision to come with some flexibility. You wanted it to provide direction, but you also didn't want it to be narrow and small and back the state or the State Department of Education into a corner. So you said, small number of very big goals, make sure we stay aspirational. And they should be, these are, you know, um, modifiers coming directly from your interviews. Mobilizing, inspiring should produce energy, passion and purpose. And you said it should not be overwhelming in nature, that the language needs to be understood by all. It should not be, uh, too exhaustive. It should not be too narrow. It shouldn't be a long list of a hundred action items. It really needs to center in a framework that gives you clear direction of where you wanna go. You also said, one of the reasons this is critically important is at this moment in time, we're still sorting out the after effects of COVID nineteen and the pandemic and school closings from last spring and school closings going even through this year. And the, and better understanding the, 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 um, some of the damage that might have been done as well as some of the opportunities that might have been created, we won't really know. And we won't know maybe throughout this entire year. It might take us a while to understand that. And we wanna make sure that the framework and the big goals that you create, create space for us to learn and be a dynamic organization, should not be too detailed, shouldn't box us in. This is what a number of you said. Yeah, a number of you also said that it should be, well, everybody said, it should be informed by stakeholders. You may, I heard from multiple people that voice is important and voices of constituents and stakeholders whose voices maybe the charge to me was to do our best to aggressively bring in voices who are implicated by the educational system and, and make sure that, that the insights and perspectives of those stakeholders is brought to bear in the process of planning and into the ultimate plan. And a couple of final thoughts. This was kind of less about the planning process and how it would develop a product or what might the product look like. A number of you acknowledged that this is both a, a wonderful opportunity to be doing strategic planning. But some of you also acknowledged it's also at the same time awkward. You have a, a transition of commissioners. You have an acting commissioner. You have, uh, kind of a lack of political clarity about state government of what will be there in two years. Will there be a long drawn out search for a new commissioner? Will there not be? Those were questions for people. And so it, for some, you were naming it as, let's just acknowledge it's a little, it's a little awkward. And most of you said, this is also a fantastic opportunity to be lifting our heads up and asking ourselves, how are we doing and where should we go? Especially because of what we've experienced in the last year. And somewhat tangential, but I think it's worth acknowledging, is a number of you said that we as a body really don't know each other that well yet. We haven't come to understand how to operate together. Not that there are problems of that, but there are new members of the board and that the pandemic has changed how you meet. Maybe it's changed how often you meet, but that it has gotten in the way of some of the more traditional orientations that new members might have experienced. And it maybe has, you know, as we've all learned how to mitigate through virtual technologies, it has somehow got in the way of team building. And so a number of you said, an additional thing we hope might happen as a result of this strategic plan is that we might gel more as a group and we might become clearer about how to function and what our roles are. So I gave you a lot there, more than I typically ever would give someone i, in one chunk. But I wanted to get us through this part of the, of the process. And what I'm hoping that we will do right now is open up the floor and, and solicit any reactions to those thoughts about what you said about process? Any additional insights and guidance you wanna make sure that I hear from you about how we approach strategic planning throughout this next year and how I work with Keith, how I work with you, so that in the end, we're all proud of what we've developed. And we're excited about the opportunity that that's gonna bring about for the young people of Connecticut. So with that, I'm gonna pause and I'm offer, uh, and request, uh, questions, observations and discussion.
I, I'm gonna say something because the silence is killing me. I, I think the summary that we, yeah, the summary is excellent, uh, Richard. I think it, it really reflects, um, very well, probably the opinions of everyone. So thank you. Thank you for that very good summary. And I think, uh, that's a good foundation for today's discussion.
Let's see Woody's hand going up.
Uh, what's?
You're, you're back on mute, Woody.
I think Woody's hand had been up from a long time ago.
Well, he said it wasn't there on purpose. He said it was, it got there.
Oh, my hands still up?
It was. I took it down for you, sir. So, so, but now we're, we're glad you're in the conversation. Uh, reactions, responses, questions?
Uh, I'm interested in the, uh, the input from stakeholders and all. What is the process like of getting, uh, who we talk to and how that's done and how it's structured?
Great question. And we'll talk a little bit more about this later. But we have, building upon the great work that's been done historically in these processes, we have a, a kind of bank of categories that have been important and, um, organizations that have been important and grassroots approaches to getting other voices connected. So I think that the, the idea is that we create a, a survey that's general and broad and allows people to answer a range of questions. And then in addition to that, we run numerous focus groups where we identify stakeholder groups who wanna talk to. And then in addition to that, we run numerous focus groups where we identify stakeholder groups who want to talk to from students to families to higher education officials. There's a range and, and, and Keith is, uh, on top of all, all of these names with us too that, and we will, um, the center's staff will organize and facilitate. And we have years of experience of designing protocols and implementing and gathering all that feedback in systematic ways, bringing the transcripts of those focus groups into a room and then using kind of classic qualitative research methodology to code and, uh, create common findings within and across stakeholder groups that we can bring back to you next August.
I have a question. Hi. Oh, I, I got an echo, so I paused for a second. Um, so part of the, uh, that first sentence about the plan, the prior plan, uh, Richard, if you can help me with that, that, um, you mentioned that, um, the prior plan should not be, um, should be considered. Is, did I understood that? Okay. So my question is, what is to be considered from that plan? Again, again, I, I'm, you know, it's been a year for me in this. I'm, 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 I'm the new one here. So what is it that in, in the, this plan was so significant that, that could be, uh, in, embedded into this strategic plan? Has that been discussed? Because I'd like to know what, what, what are those plans?
So that is a great question. And let me clarify. What, when I heard that from a, a, a number of your colleagues, they actually weren't pointing to a specific, a particular element of the class plan. They were saying, let's just make sure that we don't just pretend there hasn't been work of the board or of the State Department of Ed or of districts up to this point. Then let, let's not plan in a vacuum. Let's, let's look backwards and be really intentional and thoughtful about how do we build on where possible? And where do we turn away from if necessary? So I, it wasn't in particulars, more of this theme of be really thoughtful and, and do this with an eye over our shoulder as we're also looking ahead.
Okay. Thank, thank you. And I, and I have to also.
I will, if I, if I may.
Yes.
Part of the plan, the prior plan that, um, eh, will come to again is the notion that we built it on equity. Before that, that had never happened. Equity was a big those of our, of us that were there, um, we really fought for the word equity. As a foundational piece, if you follow the agenda of every state board of education meeting, is really connected to the, eh, goals of the, eh, plan. The other, that's the other thing we did. It doesn't have twenty goals. It has three very simple goals. And we do everything connected to it. So it was really an alignment that had not happened before. Okay. So, uh, that's why I think in this period of what we didn't want to lose above all for me is the equity piece. Thank you.
Okay. No, thank you, Estella, because I just needed some clarification as to, because if something worked in the past and it, and it, and it was, and like you said earlier, um, uh, Richard, you know, we're looking at learning experiences of our students, right? And, 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 um, and one thing that drew my attention was it, it, the teaching and learning in the classroom. What strategically connects us to those teaching and learning outcomes? So it's evident, you know, it's, it's tangible. And, and so again, um, that I, I thought that there were so, some of those pieces that were part of this plan that maybe we don't have to, um, uh, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. That was my, that was mine.
And, and that is going to be part of our kind of needs assessment process. And, and we'll actually be gathering more data. The, the point that I was just trying to lift up just now in relationship to that is that a number of you said, however we approach the process, make sure we're also building on where appropriate the work we've already done. Just, eh, basically it was counsel to be thoughtful in the, in the approach. And, and I appreciate that. And I, and to Estella's point, uh, there's, there, you were universal in wanting to keep equity at the front. And you'll, you'll see that in the later part of our conversation when we start talking about the vision, but also with strengths, weaknesses, areas of development, opportunities and threats. And I think that, that Bob is trying to get into the conversation.
Yeah, thanks. The, uh, thing I was gonna mention also was when you talk about stakeholders, you ought to include the employers too. You know, that, you know, we do that with the technical schools for a specific purpose, but you know, a lot of these kids are gonna work for somebody. And, uh, you know, it's getting that input is good.
Absolutely. And we already have, uh, them included in our, in our, uh, in our lists.
Okay.
Malia?
Thanks. Sorry the delay of my computer being able to catch up with my wanting to unmute. Um, I wanted to just circle back on the equity piece and just, and I think we'll get there, as you said, um, which at the end of our, our, or later in our conversation. But I, I just want to, for me, I think, um, I just want for us to not, not just not lose that focus on, that focus on, on, on equity. Um, but to even be more intentional and bolder than we've been in the past, right? So to Estella's point that that word had not even been there. Now let's take that even further in our intentionality moving forward. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions, reactions, something you want to discuss in relationship to the topic of kind of the process and how we'll approach this?
I think Gary raised her hand, Richard.
Okay.
Yes. I just wanted to add in to basically what Malia and Estella were speaking of. Um, and Awilda, how you brought up. I know from when, for me, when this plan was actually put in place, I think as a board, we saw two major differences in two major committees, and that was in accountability and, um, uh, legislation. Prior to that, it was accountability. I recall that my first couple of years on the board, it was sort of a compliance committee and it was check, check, check. And we really weren't deeping, we weren't diving into accountability and what actually was going on in these schools. And when the staff started referring to this plan, it, it forced them as well as the schools and, and so forth that came in front of us to also, it wasn't an easy shift over. Um, but it certainly has made a huge difference, I think, and Estella would agree, in accountability of what it was like when we sat on it. This goes back two commissioners ago and to what it is now. Um, and the same thing with legislation, those people on legislation, you know, we very often get updates to certain goals. That never occurred either before, um, that took place. It was just simply new programs came through. And again, it was like a compliance, check, check, check. Okay, we're, we're good with this. I'll go to the full board instead of taking that deep dive and intentional look in particular on equity of certain programs that came in front of us. So that was where I saw the big shift. Um, and we're, you hate to see that just go like, all right, that plan's over. We don't have to do that anymore because I, that still has to, I believe, still has to remain there just even a more intentional focus even more.
And to, to build on what you're saying, you, you, you're underscoring one of the points I was making earlier about the atypical uses of plans. You, you operationalized it within the board. You, you didn't just have a piece of paper or a file on a dra, on a drive somewhere. You organized your time and work together in relationship to themes in the plan. And that is a, it's not the only way you can do it, but it's a great example of how to, to create routines and systems that make you stay in relationship to the plan as opposed to the plan getting created and then you just go on to, uh, to other work. So with, um, I'm, I'm a teacher by training. I, I started in this career thirty years and my very first teacher evaluation, I was told, you need more wait time. And for those of you who have taught, you know, know how the importance of wait time. Aaron, Aaron's laughing here. So I, my, um, my coach at the time said, tell me what you think your average wait time after a question was. And I said, kind of cockily as a twenty-two-year-old teacher, oh, I'm guessing five or six seconds. He says, my, my stopwatch, it was maybe point six seconds after you would pose another question or you would take the first answer. So I'm, I'm creating a little bit of space here. So there's any other ideas. But then I'm gonna move us in to, uh, to the next part of our conversation. Okay. Thank you so much for your, your feedback on that. And if there's anything that, uh, emerges in, in subsequent conversations that makes you want to go back to this beginning one, we will definitely do that in the course of the retreat today. So thank you. I'm gonna bring back up my screen again and we're gonna move into, uh, the idea of a SWOT analysis, which kind of got you teed up to begin doing as a group, even though you weren't together. So I, it was an absolute honor to interview all of you. What came across to me at the highest level was the, the sincere passion that you all hold for young people in Connecticut and your belief that no matter what we are doing now that is good, we could always be doing much more. And that, uh, students need the best from adults and from educators and from state policy and that our most marginalized students need even more. I mean, I just, it was, it was, I left every single one of those interviews with more energy than I had going in. It really was a gift. And I want to feed back in major portions of what I heard from you because I got to hear from all of you. You, you only were in a one-on-one conversation. Uh, and I want to make sure that you, you also get to hear what your colleague said in relationship to some of the big questions. Some of the big questions were around this. So I know that most, maybe all of you are familiar with the idea of a SWOT analysis. It is a very simple heuristic that helps you think about what are the strengths, what are the weaknesses, what are the opportunities and what are the threats that an organization faces at any given time? Strengths and weaknesses, which are on the top row, tend to be internal in nature. You know, what, look at what we do now. What do we do well? What are our assets? What do we not do so well? Where are there some, some blind spots or we just haven't yet got to it yet? The bottom row, opportunities and threats tend, tends to be of a nature where we're looking beyond ourselves. What are, what's coming down to us because of time or because of? So what are our opportunities? What are our threats? And I asked all of you versions of questions. And I, uh, and I had the lecture, I, I printed, I didn't plan on it because I really try not to kill as many trees. I'm, I'm trying to go digital and all my note taking. And I took notes, uh, as you talked and I printed and, uh, I realized three days ago when I printed them all again and wanted to read them on paper so I could code them, that I had fifty pages of single spaced type, uh, notes from all of these interviews. And I read them three or four times, I think four in total, and they were fascinating every time. And I worked towards, uh, in a disciplined way, identifying patterns and trends that represented many voices. So if, if there are things that you shared with me that didn't show up, there's gonna be space to add them in. But what I was trying to paint a picture of is not what's every single idea that the board members shared individually. I was, I was looking for the collective. So what did I hear collectively from you? So what I'm gonna do is feed back to you for each of these categories, what I thought the major patterns are. And then I'm gonna pause after each of them and enable you to answer me clarifying questions or ask me clarifying questions. So I'll say, here are the strengths as I heard them. And you could say, Richard, I didn't understand that first bullet. Can you tell me more about what you mean by that? Or can you tell me more about what people's ideas were? And I'll be happy to answer that. But I'm gonna try to bound the reaction to each of these four areas just to clarifications and questions. And then get through all four because you're gonna notice they, they bleed into each other. Some strengths are actually weaknesses. Some opportunities are in fact threats. So after I presented all four, you've had an opportunity to ask questions about each of those. We're gonna open up a rather free, free flowing conversation where I'm gonna be asking you, what did I miss? And what are the implications of all of this for the state of it, the state of Connecticut, for our educational system, for the strategic plan, for the board? And, and I'm just gonna carefully capture notes. Hopefully you'll, you'll be driving the conversation among yourself because it's really about who are we and, and how should we, uh, and what should we be prioritizing in coming years? So with all that preamble established, let's talk strengths. So many, if not most of you commented one way or the other about how well positioned the State Department of Education is right now. And there was a lot of attention to the leadership team that even with the transition of the commissioner, with our, with our commissioner getting poached away from us into DC, that there was this recognition that we had this very strong leadership team. Uh, and it had diversity. It had a track record of collaboration. It has deep expertise. And it also has the respect and it has partnerships throughout the state. And so, uh, I think that people felt good about that. It wasn't with a lack of critical eye. It was just, we're really lucky. We're in a moment in time where we have this rather great department and we have a great relationship to the department from the board. And we have a great relationship to the, to the, uh, newly named acting commissioner and to the deputy and to the rest of the team. And I think people were, uh, in many ways celebrating and thinking, what a great opportunity as we build a new plan to know that we can count on these very gifted leaders to help move it into operation. You also said that, uh, that it showed up in the last plan, as was just discussed, that we're seeing across the entire state, more and more people talking about equity in rather powerful ways. And even the, the discussions that people are having now about various forms of inequity, you commented about being more powerful, more pointed, more honest than they were even just five years ago, in part probably because they were catalyzed by events beyond us. Uh, and, and things happening be, outside our state and outside of education are creating some hard conversations and some, uh, some self exploration at the individual organization and, and entire district level. So that, that people were seeing that as a strength and something that could be built upon. There was a recognition that the board has had relatively stable leadership for a long period of time. And that, that even with new members, there's a lot of talent in the new members and that this board recognizes how to focus on governance. There were several of you said, we don't micromanage. We have a strong relationship with the department. We recognize our role. We know how to ask hard questions. We know how to hold the, the State Department to, um, accountable where, where we need to. Uh, but we're also in partnership with them and we don't overstep our bounds, which sometimes happens in boards, uh, educational boards or also boards to nonprofits and other entities. You said that we have a rather healthy data system that we didn't have years ago, that it has, that the portal has been built out and it, it's rather strong and that this data system and the mechanisms that people have for accessing it can drive decision-making at the state and local level in ways that we, we couldn't have a few years ago. You commented on the fact that we have some real islands of excellence in the state. We have examples of districts that are innovating, that they are reimagining what classrooms can be, what schools can be. They're redefining even what success can look like. And so that, that gives us the opportunity to lift up those examples and for the entire state to learn from them and just to leverage that, that natural variation that happens. So you, that, you were seeing though variation can be a liability and a limitation, and many of you were talking about, we have to better support the, the districts that aren't moving as well. You were saying it's worth recognizing that we do have some places doing some rather phenomenal work. And we need to honor that and make sure that we understand how to leverage it as an entire state. You knowledge that kind of culturally and policy-wise and even financially, there was this sense that Connecticut does believe in education. Maybe we can do more. But we were a state with a history of investment and commitment to education and that's something great. And it's a great context to be in when you're trying to think about the next years. You also noted, um, maybe less so, but there were still three or four people who missed. You also noted, um, maybe less so, but there were still three or four people who mentioned this, that we're seeing around us and across the whole state, a new recognition and a new embrace, um, a new degree of educators embracing that we need to pay attention to the whole child. That educational institutions in Connecticut can't just be about literacy and numeracy. That we need to pay attention to wellness, socio-emotional learning, the, um, development of skills and competencies in a broad set of areas. So that we can fully prepare students for the 21st century. And that you recognize that that's in the conversation now. That there's, there's greater attention to this broader sense of the whole child. And it's happening in districts across the state. It's happening in state con- conversation right now. And several of you noted that COVID had helped bring this even more to the fore. So, there was a sense that these are, uh, among a number of big strengths that our educational system has. And so, with that, I'm gonna pause and ask you if you have any clarifying questions for me. So, I'll come out of screen share. And again, I'm gonna, we're gonna create an opportunity for you to talk to your colleagues about all of these and go into further detail. But is there anything you would like, as the person who is the translator of your messages? Is there, is there anything you want me to talk more about? Is there some wording that was not clear that you would like me to clarify? Doing my counting, you know, counting my seconds in my head here. Yes, sir, Eric?
Yeah, Richard, um, thank you for the rundown. Uh, you may have covered it, uh, but I had to walk away really quickly. But I, I know when I talked to you, um, I, I was really, um, stressing and focusing the, the, the issue of, or the subject, I'm not the issue, the subject of community, right? How in fact, um, schools, especially so-called community schools, um, and teachers and, and school leaders have to be connected to the community that they are working. And maybe that was kind of the last line you talked about, right? Around, um, coldness of, of child and, 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 and health and wellness. Maybe you kind of collapsed into that. Um, but I know I was very explicit in terms of, um, really focusing on that.
No, and you, you're, you were very clear and others were with you. And you're gonna see that show up a little bit later, a little bit in the weaknesses and areas of development as well as the vision. And there are several people who connected that. So, I, I appreciate that question. And if you don't see it show up uh, later, make, let's make sure that it gets in, because it definitely was part of the conversation. Okay, so I'll bring back up the screen and we'll go into the, the next part. And which will be weaknesses or areas of development. For many of the focus group, for many of the interviews, I didn't, I didn't really, I tried not to frame this as just weakness. Uh, I was trying to frame it as what should the district, what should the, uh, state focus on? What should it work on? What should it develop? Whether it's because we need to do? These, I wouldn't read these as all deficits. They're, they're not all deficit in nature. They're more of, here's the next level of our work. We decided we have to keep grinding out and keep moving along as a board and as a department of education and as a state. So, here are the things that emerged where there was some commonalities, inequity, 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 right? It was the, it would be the, if it wasn't the first word, it was by the fifth word, every board member said, we just have to figure out how to do better, um, to attack inequities. So, uh, some of you talked about it in terms of gap closing. Some of you talked about racial justice. Uh, but there was a real effort, uh, to prioritize and to make sure that, that as we're thinking about a strategic plan, that we're paying attention to inequity and the equities that we need to create. Uh, some of the particular facets of that, many of you, I think at least half of you said, we've gotta make sure that our workforce in schools and in classrooms better represents the young people that we're serving. And that it's a, it's a travesty that it, it's not. And we know from research how powerful it can be. Uh, so there was a, a want to work on that. Some of you also talked about the fact that, uh, that while working on changing the demographics of our educated workforce, we also needed to make sure that our current teachers maintained and, uh, or possess some kind of cultural competency, that possess the ability to connect with and educate students who come from different backgrounds. That was something that you said we need to work on. Uh, you also recognized that, that we have inequities in a variety of ways. And one of them is, is kind of between districts, where we have certain districts that seem to be high flyers. And it really depends on how you measure. Some of you were talking about kind of, some of them perform really well. Some of them are growing really well. And we have some districts that aren't doing either of those two. They're staying kind of static and they're performing relative, they're, they need some improvement in their performance. While, while we have some districts that are growing and performing particularly well. And that that creates a huge, uh, inequitable experience for young people. So, depending upon where, what district you're attending, maybe you have a greater chance of a, of an improved system over the next two or three years versus other, uh, students. You also talked about the fact that we're still early in this, that are, that historically, we've talked about achievement gaps. But the statewide emphasis on equity is still new. And we need, and I think that this is maybe a little bit, um, what you were getting at, Malia, but I heard it from a number of people. Is we have to make sure that we really double down on this. We move from words into actions. And we figure out how to operationalize visionary expressions and words like equity into, well, what are we fundamentally doing? And how is it really gonna change the experience of, of a child who, who is sitting today in a third-grade classroom, whether virtually or in person? You also said that we have a, a lot of students right now in the state of Connecticut, in part because of COVID. But even before COVID, we were struggling with this. We have students who were suffering. And especially on a, on a mental health basis and a well-being, uh, basis. And we're seeing increases of anxiety and depression. And you were, you were appreciative of the efforts that the state had taken up to now and some guidance and some supports that had gone out to counselors. But there were a few of you who said, we just, we've gotta do better. We've gotta figure out how to be a support network for students who are really struggling. Again, it's back to that whole child piece that we can't just be focused narrowly on math and literacy or other content domains. It has to be the whole child. And, and well, children in a variety of ways, from physical health and mental health, are, are better learners, because we're, we're setting up the conditions for them to succeed. You also recognize that, uh, we have, um, people out in our workforce who still need education. They got, maybe they were alienated and disenfranchised and pulled away from the educational system. But that you were recognizing that, that there's an important emphasis on kind of the classic mental model of, of K-12 children, which is, you know, kindergarteners, maybe we're talking with preschool up until they, they graduate and then go into college. But there were some of you who were really, um, poignant in talking about, we have people in our society who didn't get the learning they needed. And really need access into society and the economy. And maybe schooling is the mechanism for doing that. Uh, and back to Eric's point, we need, we need to bind, uh, the schools with community more powerfully. We need to bring in more voice. But we also need to be working in partnership with communities in a much more authentic and powerful way. Uh, so, that, that came up. And, and, uh, though there was some recognition that there were some successes going on here, I think there was the general sentiment that thi- this is something that we needed to do better, uh, more deeply, more authentically. And we need to build the capacity of our systems to do that. And so, I will, I'll pause there. And again, I'll come out of share screen just so I can see all of your uh, smiling faces at the end of this Friday and see, uh, what questions you have for me. Bob, your, your, yours was the first emoji hand to go up. What questions do you have for me, sir?
I guess, uh, I guess the thing that I would bring up is this, there's also a, an inequity in terms of funding. There's some, you know, especially the, the ones that aren't, we need the funding is not necessarily where the funding goes. And, uh, you know, the state, the Board of Education has been, uh, state board has been pretty silent on that issue. And I think we need to take a more aggressive approach in trying to educate the legislature. And, uh, you know, put a stake in the ground around that issue.
And I appreciate you raising that. It does come up in, um, some of the next slides. When most of the board, when I asked board members, what do we need to work on? Uh, the funding came up occasionally, but it comes up a little bit later in terms of opportunities and threats. You know, in a really palpable way, where kind of many people weighed in. So, I hope that you'll hear that represented later, because I think you're right. That is a, it's a theme that we need to, um, that we need to acknowledge. So, Estella?
Sure, um, I think it belongs here, is the whole notion of the, uh, uh, department itself, its capacity to do all the work it needs to do and provide all the support it needs to provide, when in many, uh, instances, it's been, uh, losing personnel and staff in critical areas. I didn't think of that when I spoke to you. But it is when you emphasize, um, the capacity along the way with the strategic plan. And I think that's a real issue. People do not understand how many staff has, have left and how lean, um, the staff is nowadays. And in order to do the work that needs to be done, there's a need for more support people to work at the department.
Point, point taken. Uh, Erin, your hand is up. Any, any other clarifications, questions you have for me?
Um, I just wanted to comment, um, the community piece that was listed. I, I think is just, I, I thought it was so important when I stated it as well as I know others did. Um, and I was thrilled to see what we now are seeing with the collaboration monies coming out um, with our districts. I think we, we saw many of our districts sort of get forced into using community partners last spring. When, you know, they, they had no choice. They were desperate to have, get help from their community, to get the kids online, to get hotspots. And you saw the communities rally. And then you, and I think for a lot of districts, they were just amazed on how much those folks were there with them. And they've always been there for them. All they had to do was ask, you know, they've always been there for them. I'm hoping that we'll see, that the board will see some fantastic innovative plans using community folks over the summer. You know, get away from the academics. Our kids don't need reading and writing in this, in this area. Um, and really engage these community partners in really different ways, whether through different jobs, exposure, the arts, music, all those types of things. Um, and hopefully, that will also increase that community base. And that's what I'm hoping, that will increase that community base. And they will follow through with that when they open their schools and remain in those community bases. Um, because they're vital. And they're, they're so vital for kids to have too. So, I really, I really, that resonated a big time with me, that piece.
I appreciate that, because you're adding some nuance into the word "community," which often gets thrown out in a rather big way. And you're helping to talk about the various facets of what does it mean to partner with community. And, and I do think there's some opportunities. I'm gonna call on, uh, on Don Harris. And, and I, as I call on him, know that I would, I have studied how he runs a board meeting and want to acknowledge that we would already be out of the board meeting two hours ago if he had been running tonight. Like, I'm in awe of how efficient he can run a meeting. So, I, I, I'm, I'm kind of, um, skittishly calling on you, sir, to, uh, to pose some questions.
No, I'm not, I'm not trying to take over. I'm just, I wanna say thank you. I don't have a particular question. But I wanna, uh, phase back before, because your, your brain runs a little quicker than I was able to speak. And just talk about the strengths that you had listed originally in, in our staff at the, at the state board. All right? That, that really is impressive to me, because we had an outstanding commissioner with Miguel Cardona. But when he left, uh, to take over the, uh, Secretary of Education for the country, um, we did not lose a step. We did not lose a step, because we have a, we have a very competent, able staff that stepped right in. And the ship did not sink at all. So, uh, and, and it is diverse and, uh, which is important, uh, to me. Um, now, as you go into the weaknesses, I saw a lot of my statements, uh, within your, uh, and, within the weaknesses. But I, you know, we, I'm, I'm really reflected on the comments about the teaching staff. And, uh, and it just does not represent the democratics, the demographics of our students. And, um, and I know we call ourselves trying to fix it. I just, I'm just kind of anxious to get it moving, because it's a, it's a battle that I have fought through my forty years as a, as a teacher. And I continue to fight it. So, um, but that's what that minority teacher, uh, recruitment legislation is all about. And we keep using the term equity. I just wanna be sure that we infuse that with the word diversity, because it's important. It's important. And, uh, finally, and I don't usually disagree uh, with my colleague Erin, but, uh, we do, our kids still need reading and writing. Thirteen months out of the year, they need reading and writing, but it does need to be infused, uh, with the arts, et cetera. So, uh, you know, we got a summer school program that's being developed in Bloomfield. But it's gonna have reading and writing and math in the morning and the arts in the afternoon. And, you know, we still need, we still need to keep doing what we're doing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Woody?
Uh, talking about the inequities in funding, uh, should we be considering uh, the impact of the money from the American Rescue Plan in our strategic planning? And where that money goes and its in, long-term impact?
So, that's a huge question. It's so big and I think it's so important. I would ask you to actually hold on to it for a little while. Because when we get through all four of these, the opportunities and threats, I, I wanna see what's been missed. But I think, uh, my, my quick answer, not as a board member, is I think everybody ought to be paying attention. And, uh, both in terms of the short term, but also the long term. And when the cliff happens, I think that we have a huge opportunity and we also have some huge threats that come with the resources if we don't, if we're not smart about how we use them. Uh, Karen, you're, you were trying to get in here?
I am. I'm, I'm still figuring out teams. Thank you. Um, so, I, uh, appreciate the strength that was mentioned that is around our, our data capacity and our ability to really, um, look at what's happening. I think, um, on our weaknesses, I do think we need to really clear, clearly call out, um, that there are, are, uh, subgroups that are not being well-served, um, by our system and that, that are being left, left behind. And that, that, that's a weakness. Um, and I think we, we see that with our, um, our outcomes for our black male students on a whole host of things. We're seeing that with outcomes on our, on our, um, English learners. And I do think that needs to be called out clearly as a current weakness.
Agreed. And, and it did, uh, it definitely came up in the conversation. So, if, if it feels as if I'm left that out, my apologies. Because I think that people were really passionate about, um, uh, the, the particulars of, of the inequities that are showing up with subgroups, especially.
And our special needs. I, I wanna, I wanna elaborate what Karen said. Yes. I hundred percent with Karen, because I keep bringing back the, you know, the retention of, of, of our black, uh, and Latino males. Uh, in terms of discipline, in terms, in terms of, um, behavior, et cetera. But anyway, yes, the, also the importance of, I just wanna add another thing, is the autism, okay? You know, we talked about earlier about mental health issues, but also the social-emotional. Because that's, that's the language now, social-emotional.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions before we move into opportunities and threats?
No questions. This is Jane here. But when I look at the weaknesses, I certainly appreciate the acknowledgement of the-
uh, inequity and closing the gap. But one piece I think is still missing, and that is inclusiveness. We have to make sure what, whatever environment our students enter, whether it's university, community college, or, uh, pre-K through twelve, that they are welcome, that there is a sense that they are welcome in that environment. So it's, it's important to meet students where they are and provide supplemental instruction. That's fine. And, and we need teachers who mirror the demographics. But we also want the sense that students themselves feel that it's, and feel excited about. And they are typically K-grade, first graders. We see these kids. They're excited. They're excited to get there. I have two grandchildren and they're excited to go to school. But at some point, that excitement diminishes. So it's, it's that variable, that inclusiveness, inclusion, that really should be focused on as well. And I don't know whether, when I had my interview for Richard, I think we talked longer than the time was allowed it. For the interview, whether I mentioned that. But I just wanted to just share that today.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, any, any other questions? Fantastic. So I'm going to move us into the next one. Let me share screen again. And if you hear any thuds in the background, I've realized that my son is a performer by nature. And I think he's chosen to practice tap dancing directly above my office today. So it's, I, hopefully it's not being picked up by the microphone. It is definitely a little concerning for me here. Uh, so opportunities and threats. Again, I, I asked you to think about what are things coming around us? What are things we should be paying attention to that, that are opening up, opening up possibilities for us? And that we ought to be concerned about. And maybe they're one in the same sometimes. So I, I'm actually going to present both sets of these to you. And again, then we'll step back and have a bigger conversation. So in terms of opportunities, many of you acknowledged that the pandemic, but also the response to the pandemic. May have created some opportunities that we could not have imagined. Let's say the summer of two thousand nineteen. The notion of how, how nimble some school districts would be, how nimble the state department would be. In prioritizing certain actions, in developing certain, uh, opportunities. In providing some accessibility that did not exist. And specifics, there were some calling out of some innovation in policies, some innovation in technology. Some innovation in the use of waivers, maybe that connects to the policy piece. But there was also this recognition that some, well, instead of just a but, some people said, and we're realizing, even with all the reasonable worry of learning loss. That there are some students in the state who maybe have been better served. Because of the kinds of learning opportunities that have been afforded them out of urgency and out of emergency. Because of COVID, that some students, maybe, you know, maybe this goes back to inclusion, haven't felt safe in schools. Did not have their, their ways of learning nurtured and supported in person. And that working online may have been a real resource and asset to them. And, and we don't know yet, data-wise, is that, how, what percentage of students? But I think there's a sense that we do have some students in certain levels. Who are, who, um, maybe might not ever want to go back in person if they had a choice. Because they're thriving right now in certain ways. There were, uh, there was a recognition that there really is strong connected tissue. Between the K-12 system and especially the public sector of the higher, higher education system. We're seeing more innovative partnerships. We're seeing more district, uh, community college partnerships. We're seeing students taking courses. We're seeing students from higher ed going in and, uh, in a variety of capacities into schools. And then that was just something to build upon. And it was, it was kind of an asset that we ought to keep thinking about. There was recognition that because of the work in the broader policy environment. I don't mean just legislative, but some of these bigger conversations that were happening around the state. Especially the ones that are having implications for college and career readiness. That those create space for us to do work in, um, in education and for the board. So there was just a, I, I'm not sure anyone really had expressed to me. I'm sure that there were some ideas, but the interviews didn't go into what would that look like and how would we exploit those? But there definitely was a sense that there's an opportunity there. And there was also a recognition, and this goes back to, to acknowledging the good work of the State Department of Education. That in the previous few years, there had been concerted effort by the Department of Ed. To support district-to-district sharing and district-to-entire-state sharing of best practice. Uh, when, when have particular districts solved certain problems of practice and what can we learn from them? And how do we take that kind of new approach, new technology? And allow others to learn from it without artificially imposing it upon everyone. And so that those efforts to promote collaboration, uh, are bearing fruit in some places. And maybe that COVID created even more opportunities for that. So that's a, a big opportunity. And I'll move us into threats also. And there's, there's several here listed. But again, a number of you noted thoughtfully that the world's not a simple place. And that certain things that are opportunities can also be seen as threats. And certain things that are, that are clearly threats can be seen as opportunities if we allow ourselves to frame them as such. So clearly the pandemic creates some threats for us. We talked about some of the opportunities. But we have some students that we're really worried about, who, we have small numbers, since we don't even know where they are, right? That certain districts haven't been able to access their families. And we don't know whether they moved and just didn't communicate. Have they left the country? Have they left the state? Are they living with extended family and receiving services somewhere else? But we also have students who are still with us, but maybe they're not with us. That they're, they're, they've lost connections to schools in powerful ways. Their, their, um, engagement in the learning process is more anemic and we're just not meeting their needs. And so there's a number of you were saying, we've got to figure that out. There, uh, a number of you talked about the fact that we have a state that has designed an educational system. That has a hundred and sixty-nine or a hundred and eighty-plus, depending on how you count them, school districts. And that this approach to, to municipal, municipality-associated districts. Creates a lot of proclivity, a lot of small organizations wanting to do things their way. And that that in and of itself wouldn't be a bad thing. But that it really is not efficient from a resource point of view. If you're trying to figure out how to redeploy resources in an equitable way, that that's a drain and it stretches resources thin. That it promotes inequity for a variety of reasons. And we'll talk about that later. But in part because it, it promotes some inequities that exist between cities. And it also pushes back against the statewide vision that in the past, when the state has tried to be bold in something. The need to kind of bring along two hundred different entities. Uh, with it almost promotes a, a, a volunteerism approach. As opposed to, no, 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 we need to really move in this direction because it's right for the state of Connecticut and it's right for every child. That it's sometimes difficult to pull that off, given the way that our, our structure works. The, uh, a number of you talked about just the impact of poverty in general. That, uh, poverty and as we know, the, the relationship between poverty and educational outcomes, that correlation. It doesn't have to be fate if we can figure out how to organize schools and supports better for families and for young people. But you were acknowledging that it, it, it's a huge, it plays a huge toll on families, on, on young people. And then with COVID going on and the food insecurity and the job insecurity over the last year. That we still aren't quite sure the enormity of that challenge going forward. Uh, many of you acknowledged the structural nature of some of our, uh, inequities. Around achievement and attainment. And I, I think that the specific example that came up multiple times, though this was just, I think it was an example as it was given. Is the relationship between housing and educational opportunities. That if you, if you have the means financially, you can kind of buy yourself into a community with a different kind of education system. Uh, but if you don't have those choices, you might feel kind of trapped. And so there was this, this, this strong relationship between the, the opportunities. That, uh, families experience and young people experience based upon their zip code. And that those aren't equitable. Where, where you live is not equitable in Connecticut. Did we, um, there was also recognition, it didn't come up of, among everybody. But there was some recognition from a couple of board members that we need to keep paying attention to the fact that as a state. We're seeing, um, projections of declining student enrollment. There's variation within the state. Some districts we're seeing it go up and that might be projected that way for a while. But as a whole, we still have this declining student enrollment and that's going to interact with financial worries. It's going to constrain systems because, uh, student enrollment doesn't tend to, uh, decline. In ways that are, uh, let's say convenient, right? If you have one or two students in a large number of classrooms spread out across the state. It's hard to figure out how to right-size the system without a whole lot of pain. So there definitely some challenges ahead that you were acknowledging. Funding came up. Again, there was reference to this earlier and, and a number of you wanted to make sure you're, um, that this came in. But a number of you were saying, the, the funding challenges, the structure of how we allocate resources, the amount. How it's prioritized and the, the degrees to which is, it, it is equitable or inequitable. Creates fundamental conditions within which schools and communities and, um, and districts operate. And that we need to pay attention to that. So there, there definitely were a few of you who were saying, we really need to wrap our arms around this. And, and figure out, uh, whether there's something that we can do around that. Uh, some of you also acknowledged kind of a, almost a sociological reality about education. That is incredibly well documented in the literature. I've written about this even myself. That innovation is incredibly strong, writ large in education in general. Now, we've seen the counter examples to that because of COVID. We've definitely been more innovative in the last twelve months. Because of urgency and necessity. But historically, education tends to fall behind other sectors in the pursuit of new approaches to doing the work. And that we still have forces in the state that are okay with status quo. Maybe they, they feel comfortable in the way we approach things. Or that there are interest groups that benefit from the way that things are currently, um, structured. And therefore it sometimes gets in the way of us reimagining how we do schooling. On this, uh, on the surface, there might look like there's some radically different changes in classrooms, whiteboards. Uh, smart boards, for example, and computer devices. But there's a lot of acknowledgement that if you go underneath the surface, the fundamental patterns of teaching and learning and schooling. Tend to look a lot like they did fifty years ago. Even, you know, instead of a smart board, we had chalkboards. Instead of, uh, instead of computers, we had notebooks. But sometimes that's all that's being done in the computers, the same thing that would have been done in a chalkboard. So I think there was this recognition that, um, that the, the, the gravitational pull towards saying the same. Might actually get in the way of being bold sometimes in the state of Connecticut. And there was some recognition, it wasn't universal, but a number of you were talking about. As we talk increasingly about college and career readiness. There's this other force that's out there that we, we, that gets media coverage. But no one really knows how to wrap their, their arms around it, is this escalating cost of higher ed. And it, and it produces basically a huge structural problem for how we operate. Especially if you're trying to move people, or at least some significant portions of students there. It's going to create an economic drain on the state, some of you said. It creates economic drain on students. It changes the calculus for families about whether college is actually a good investment. And whether there's a return on that investment. And it creates some pressures to be more creative about the other possibilities for young people. At the end of their K-12 experience. So I'm going to come out of the, um, my screen share. And what I would ask is that we take three or four minutes just to see if there are any clarifying questions. We then take our break and then there's time set aside for more free-flowing conversation among you around what does all that mean? What a big picture, did I miss anything? But more importantly, what are the implications for our strategic planning conversations? Implications for priorities that you might want to see show up in the ultimate plan? So any questions, anything you want me to clarify in relationship to what you just heard? I think Malia, you were the quickest on the draw in terms of your emoji.
I'd be Karen. Well, first I'll say that last bullet around higher education has a lot to unpack right there. But I'm going to put that aside for right now. Um, but the, uh, uh, and sort of coupling opportunity and threat. And pulling in a comment, I think Woody raised, uh, before about the federal infusion of dollars, right? So in the strengths, initially you had listed, Richard, the, the strong historical investment and commitment to education. Um, uh, of investing and, and committing to education. I, I was thinking that'd be more in sort of this opportunity bucket because it's more of an export. But I'd also put then potentially the, the opportunity of, of the federal infusion of dollars. But that a threat is that we don't use that opportunity. To target those dollars in a way that help us to advance. Some of our critical, you know, i- issues around equity, right? We keep talking about it over and over again and that, and that we, uh, a, a potential threat is the sort of, diffusion of, of dollars in a way that just sort of continues to get, make sure everybody in Connecticut. Just feels good they got something as opposed to taking the hard line. That we need potentially to, to really be intentional in targeting about what we do with those dollars now. And how those dollars then can help set us up for potentially a cultural shift. And how we, how we fund, uh, education in the state.
Karen?
Thank you. Yes. Um, as you called out in the threats, the issues around, uh, uh, local control. Um, I would also put in the opportunities that. Policy as it intersects with education. So I think there's also an opportunity there.
I'm writing that down right now, along with all these other notes. Thank you for, for that. I think that's very true. Didn't come up in the interviews, but I think it is definitely worth recognizing.
I know Eric, you have your hand up, buddy?
I do. Do you want, I, I can wait.
Oh, very nice of you. Okay, before my, before I lose my thought. Malia, I was the one that I think overwhelmed Richard with that whole institutional depth. Because being in higher ed, that's what I hear a lot. So I, so, but I, I do want to make a, it's not a clarification. Um, it's more, um, opportunities. When we talked about, um, that we, we recognized the same students were better served. That there were certain stu-, the opportunities, there were opportunities for disadvantaged families and low-income students. And, and, and let me give you just two examples. One is, is that we, um, when, when we realized that. The poor people, okay, the lack of all this technology, okay? When they, and, and the involvement of parents, what were the parents learning in, in, at home, okay? That's an opportunity because it helps us know the, their story about what's. About that also it was an eye-opener for, for us to understand what is there, what's happening at home? What is their real story? That, you know, the disadvantages that they had. And we talk about learning recovery. The learning recovery was always there for this population of students. For the, for, for the, for the poor families. Okay, so that's, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Uh, this is Woody, uh, following up on, uh, Malia's point. Uh, this is Woody. Uh, following up on uh, Malia's point, uh, the potential threat related to the federal money is if it's not used well and doesn't have an impact, there will be a political price to pay from that, you know, people will say, well, look, you had all that money and it didn't make a difference. So it's important to uh, think about that.
Agreed. Eric?
Yeah, um, Richard, so I'm at a, a disadvantage here because I don't, I don't have a play-by-play. Um, I don't, I, I didn't copy the SWOT analysis. However, I would love to see at some point, not now, I don't want to, uh, preempt uh, the, the uh, category of, of weakness and opportunity. Because I'm, I'm an entrepreneur and I see weaknesses as opportunities. And so I would love to see how they line up or if they are aligned in some way. Um, just, just as a, as a practice.
No, I think you're totally right and I, I was trying to underscore that, that many of you recognize that also. I did that, whenever there's a, whenever there's a crisis, if you can look deep enough, there's some opportunity that that crisis is going to create. Nothing to status quo. And I think that a number of you were thinking about how do we look at these things that feel like crises and go, there's, there's some opportunity here if we can seize it.
Got it. Thanks, man.
So what I think I would like to invite you to, you, I, you have been amazing. And, and you've also been sitting passively in a way I never would do if we were in the room together. You'd be moving, you'd be pair-sharing, you'd be, uh, you'd be in a classroom almost. And uh, you've been sitting longer than is humane. So what I would like to, running the risk that you might not come back. I recognize that's the risk here, that I'm going to invite us to kind of calibrate our clocks here and take a 10-minute refresh, whatever you need to do to refresh. Uh, and come back, it, it's uh, it's 2:57, but let's say at 3:10, we reassemble, cameras back on, ready to go, and to do a little bit more meaning-making and then to work toward um, what are our next steps as we exit in the rest of the afternoon? Estella, is there, do you have a question for me? Or are you, you're agreeing with that?
For those of us that are in our office, our, our restrooms are down the hall. So it's not like at home. So you're gonna have to excuse me.
I, I'm waving goodbye. I'm leaving.
Okay, okay. So 10 minutes, we'll see you at 3:10.
And if we don't see Karen.
You know, move around. I don't think sitting for two to four hours is particularly good thing for anybody, adults or kids. We need to build more movement and around and engagement. And it's harder on Zoom. But I appreciate all the energy that you're giving to this today, especially on a Friday afternoon. In the next conversation, Estella, I'm wondering if you might play at least the, if we need to call upon people, that you'll use your role to call upon people. Because in the next part of the conversation, what I'm hoping will happen is that the board just talks to each other. I'll just be a fly on the wall and capture notes around what does all of that mean? So is there anything else that I missed that Richard needs to capture in? But what does it mean for where we go as a state? What concerns you? I want you just to have a discussion about what you heard in relationship to the strengths, the weaknesses, the opportunities and threats for the next, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes.
Sure, I can get to bother it.
Thank you, thank you. So I'll just tee it up and I'm not, and I'll just, there are some people who called upon it. I'm just gonna quietly capture notes through the process.
Marissa?
Sure. I had two thoughts as I got my coffee during the break. Going back to the local control points and the threats or weaknesses aside, I think there are, we need to, we should be aware that there are stakeholders, right? People in Connecticut who consider that a strength, right? That people enjoy their local control and enjoy, you know, using it in different methods. So that is a balancing act that, you know, you all have been doing for many years and will continue to be a factor. And especially as, you know, there are political forces at stake also, right? When we look at an electoral map, you can clearly see the difference between red towns and blue towns and their suburban districts and the rural districts versus urban districts. So all of that is not gonna go away and hopefully will calm down. But, um, you know, has been simmering to a breaking point recently. And then the other thought I had as an opportunity and a potentially a threat would be the role of legislative initiatives in, you know, pursuing an education agenda. You know, we, as a board, seem to consider the, like, for example, the passage of the African-American and Latino history studies as a great example of something that legislation worked and was deployed. But there may be times where that can work as detrimental, a different, you know, initiative that comes out of the legislature that may be more complicated and have different implications. So those are kind of two ideas that I was mulling over during the break.
Thank you, Marissa. They are very, both of them are very insightful. I think, Bonnie, did you have your hand up and you turn it down or?
I just, I just wanna bring, bring back the question of equity in educational spending between these districts, whether it's, whether it's urban and rural and suburban, looking at how we're funding, whether it's charter, magnet, agri-science, VOTEC. I just, I just, the equity in funding our educational system in Connecticut certainly needs to be part of the discussion that we have going forward.
Good, thank you. Buck?
Yeah, I guess, you know, I think part of the, you know, as you pointed out, that the, you know, the poverty is constant across the state. And, you know, the, there's also a, you know, a racial divide across, you know, there's, it's a pretty white state, but it's not a majority white student population. And it was more than a majority in the, I'm sorry, I said that wrong. The, the percentage of minorities in the school system is much higher than this. And, but they don't, you, they, the state's got to identify with all these kids in order to make change. It's not like those kids and these kids, they've gotta have some, unless we get, we gotta somehow bring everybody together to see all the students are students of the state of Connecticut and treat them that way.
Absolutely. Thank you. Malia?
I don't know how articulate I'm gonna be, but I'm just feeling particularly, I don't know. I'm feeling as though I just don't want to, to sort of go along with the status quo, right? Like, I just want to really encourage us to push back against all of the threats that spoke to a strong tendency to just keep doing business the way we usually do business. Because we, we do constantly rail against the, the, against that status quo, right? And just everything, the, the way things have always been. And I just really hope that we, as a board, can just push that, push that further than, than we have before.
Right. Yeah. I, I wanna add also, because to me, and this is sort of, comes from my past experience, I have to acknowledge it, and my, seeing it in so many instances that I'm afraid that it could happen again. As the schools become more and more diverse, the notion that college is only for middle-class students and students of the white race and not necessarily students of color would be promoted or provided the academic pathway to make it to college. I've seen that so many times, saying, oh, workforce, and I know the importance of workforce, but I've seen it done so many times and so many instances and for so many valid reasons that I wanna make sure that that doesn't happen to our students in Connecticut, that they all have the access to college that every kid deserves to have, so.
I, I mean, Malia and Estella, you, it touched my heart what you said, because I am with you. In addition to that, in, in a lot of institutions, their mission statement is that we're to prepare productive lifelong learners. In their mission statement, in many higher education settings, okay? And what does that mean now that we've encountered this pandemic in terms of making sure that we align standards? Because now, as we know, SATs are blind in institutions. I'm interviewing students that I don't see their SATs, so I'm just getting to know who they are and, and based on their transcript, based on their GPAs, et cetera. So I, I'm very concerned that in the long run, that we don't forget that, that we all along had, have a learning recovery and that we have to continue aligning those standards and tests with the demands of work in college. Because if, because our low-income students, our first-generation low-income students, and, and which is a very diverse population, are gonna suffer. And, 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 and we're gonna, we're gonna have another pandemic, and it's not gonna be COVID. It's gonna be a different type of learning pandemic that, that we're going to face in the long run. So, so thank you, Estella and Malia, for, for just bringing that up, because it, it just, it hits me pretty tough. And I'm very passionate about what I do and, and the population that I currently continue to serve, which are the low-income first gens.
Anybody else, any other thoughts? I, I feel we're very much aligned, that that's one of the, the, the strengths that we have as a board, that in, in terms of values, we're all, we share the same values, you know? From different perspectives, we all share the same values. So I think, in that sense, although we, we don't meet in person and we haven't shared lunches, which help to gel, we still, because of our values, these values that we have, we're very much connected, so.
When we think about housing patterns and how they contribute to the segregation of the schools, it's becoming an issue now about restrictive zoning. And, and I wonder if the board is gonna have a role or should have a role in that discussion.
And I would say, what do you, I don't know what the, I don't know what the exact answer to that question is, but I think, I think as we go through this process and we're thinking about what are the different, what are our different goals and what are the different strategies that we have to, we have to think through? What, what is our, sort of, what's our approach as it relates to sort of broader policy in order to address issues like that? But then at the same time, not use those issues as an excuse for continuing to churn out the bad outcomes that, that we do, right? So what, what do we need to do differently within schools in order to ensure that those outcomes are better? While we, at the same time, play a role, figure out what the role is that we play? Your question about, you know, weighing in on policies that are not directly education, but have an impact on education.
I agree, Malia. I agree totally. Anybody else before we turn it over to Richard again?
Okay, thank you. So I, I, I think that I heard a bit what you heard, Estella, when I was doing these interviews. At, at the end of them, there clearly were different points of views, but they weren't in real contrast with each other. There were more about, well, here's, here's a topic that is a bit of more interest to me because it, it connects to what I do for a living, or, or there's a level of depth to it. I'm, I'm really passionate about this. I'm not just somewhat passionate about it. I'm really, really passionate is what I spend all my time thinking about. So I, I think there is a lot of convergence in the ideas about what the current state of Connecticut is. So with, with that, just to forecast, we will take your ideas and we'll use them as a frame, but not as a way that limits the thinking of stakeholders, because we'll get their perspective too. Maybe they see and experience things throughout the state that we don't experience. And that they can help shed a light, they can identify blind spots, they can help give it more subtlety and character. And, and we will include questions like these when we're running focus groups and when we're conducting the survey. So we keep, we keep fleshing out a pretty robust picture of what Connecticut's dealing with at this moment in time. Now that said, I also asked you to think forward a bit. It wasn't just a conversation in the interviews about where are we? I also posed questions about where we should go. I'm gonna bring the screen back up. And again, I wanna share and then I want to hear from you. So I asked, I asked you what should be the, the biggest priority slash priorities for the state of Connecticut over multiple years? And I looked at rather broad, just, just to see what would emerge. And I, I think that if the last conversation suggested that you had common values, this one will probably reinforce that even more, because there were certain things that emerged in rather bold relief. The first again was equity. You all used different language to talk about what it meant. And you, your headlines were the same, but your paragraphs under the headlines might have had some different language. But I think in spirit, you were on the same page. It was that we cannot turn away from the statewide investment and in understanding and disrupting inequity and various forms of inequity that emerged. There was talk about closing gaps and there was talk about, just a variety of, of ways that it shows up. But basically, there was a whole lot of attention to that. And it, for most people, it was the first thing that was said. So I think you're, there's a lot of agreement that whatever the vision is in a strategic plan for the state board of education, equity needs to be at the heart of it. You also, there was a lot of attention on what colleagues of mine who write about education talk about as attainment. So clearly, achievement mattered to you. You talked about how well students are performing on tests and accountability systems, et cetera. But the thing that seemed to matter more to you was this idea that education ought to position students for success beyond the diploma. That there has to be something that is awaiting students, that they are prepared for. And that the world's changing, the demands of the 21st century are, are changing, the demands of the economy are changing, the demands of citizenship are changing, some of you were talking about. So that the, we needed to make sure that the education system that we were designing in Connecticut attended to providing not just choices, but real choices. And some of you talked about this as meaningful access into the middle class. And so some of you talked about career and technical education, that we needed to enhance that. And clearly, that was already a priority in the state. Some of you talked about, we've got to get students into college and also positioned to survive. And we have all these students who, who kind of are pushed to go to college. And they take that, they internalize that message, so do their families. They go off and then they come back a semester later, semesters later, in debt and without any credits to show for it. And that's, that's not positioning them well. And some of you also talked about, we have to figure out creative pathways so that it's not just one path for all students, especially if that path is leaving behind significant portions of our population. And in that port, and in that portion that is being left behind by the pathway, it's inequitable, as, as people were talking about. So there was a lot of emphasis on equity and where do we get students to after they're through the system? There was also, and this was two less, I think these first two showed up, I would say, in eighty percent or a hundred percent of all the interviews. There were also a handful of folks who talked about kind of just fundamentally changing the nature of the relationship between educational system and people who are also advocates and partners in that. We had to real, we had to produce real, authentic partnership. And it has to include new ways of relating with family and the community, along with schools, if we're part of that school system on behalf of students. And that we still have an educator-centric way of thinking about this and an institution-centric way, especially educational institutions. But we need to rethink, reframe, recognize the assets that exist within families and communities and build upon them, and while also supporting. In addition, the, there was some reference to the quality of the child. So it wasn't just enough to talk about, are we getting kids some kind of technical certificate or college diploma or access into apprenticeship? Some of you were talking about, given the, the challenges we face as a nation, and maybe as an entire globe, that we need people of a certain kind, who, who possess certain dispositions and characteristics. So we needed balanced, independent-thinking, compassionate adults who are able to collaborate. So there was a, again, that, that didn't show up in every interview. But I think there were three people who referenced, we need to really think about the kind of human being that emerges on the other side of the educational system. And yeah, it's great that they know the quadratic equation, but are they good people? And do they possess the ability to look at diverse media streams, for example, that are highly balkanized in, in modern society and recognize what's fact, what's fiction? And maybe even develop their own point of view by weighing different sources of information. So that's what emerged. There were, there weren't a whole lot of very different ideas. Again, the vast majority of you said, our North Star ought to be around equity and it ought to be somehow tied to getting students launched to a really successful life, not just making it through and across a, a coll, an auditorium where they get a diploma. And then again, there were, there were these other thoughts about the quality of the partnerships with families, communities, and the, and the quality of the person that we're trying to produce. So I wanted to pause there. Come out. Did I miss anything? Were there other things that you think you, you at least wanna put on the table for us to entertain as informing where the, the education system goes? Again, we'll, we're gonna gather more input from stakeholders and you'll, you'll have some big conversations in August about this. But is there anything I'm missing? Are there other thoughts that have come to you since the last time that we, that we talked? Or has this conversation so far, the last two and a half hours, generated new thinking that you wanna make sure that I capture on your behalf?
I'd like to throw one thing in. I think that what we're saying now, because of the pandemic, but even without the pandemic, we have got to understand and address the most fruitful way of accommodating this whole different process of learning and of educating, where it's not just in classrooms, even for the academic part. And it, it seems to me that, that this change from the pandemic, everybody's gonna be glad to get the kids out of the house and back into schools. But there's, we've learned about how to do a lot of education outside of the classroom. And we ought to find ways to build on that.
Yeah, that's a, Alan, that's a good point. You brought up a good point, because my experience has been, that I, I, I thought, I, all along, I assumed, okay? I was a fool to assume that the, the population of students that I'm working with, they were all good. They were better off in a classroom. But some, when we did assessments, they said they would, hybrid was fun, okay? They did, they did some in the classroom, some at home. They, some did better, better than what I expected. So you're, so this has been a learning curve for many of us that are, that are working with, with, with students and that understand that, that we're listening to what they're saying, because not one size fits all, okay? And not all low-income, first-generation students are wanting to be in at-home learning, okay? Based on my assessment, the majority of them wanna be in a classroom. Did, did somebody say my name? I, I don't wanna, did, did I hear somebody say my name?
I think it was just an echo.
Okay, yes, I, I have a tendency. And then, the other thing is, Richard, if you, I remember what Dr. Gates said earlier, when it came to equity, racial. Can, I like to propose, if you can add the word inclusion, equity, racial inclusion, so, so that we're embarking, going back to that equity, what initially you had answered, and Estella, when it came to that, that, that plan? I'm just, thank you.
Duly noted, duly noted. It's come up a couple of times today.
Gracias.
It wasn't a dominant word choice. Equity seemed to be the, the one that, if I did a word cloud of all of the transcripts, equity would have been the huge word in the middle of the screen, like eight times larger than any other word. But I'm, I'm making sure that we, we introduce the vocabulary around inclusion.
Yes, yes.
I think.
Thank you.
Let me.
Don Harris, your hand is up?
Yes, sir. And also keep in mind equity, inclusion, and diversity. It's, I'm gonna keep calling that till I take my final breath. But I'm agreeing with Alan and Wilga. We do not know, because we don't have data on the effect of virtual learning. And I'm of the opinion that virtual learning has worked for many of us. And just, and I personally don't believe it's gonna go away anytime soon, nor probably, nor should it. So I'm, you know, it, it's something that needs to be considered before we make any massive, massive changes.
Malia?
Thanks, yeah, I wanted to just echo. Um, Alan and Wilga and, and Dawn, you know, I had, as Alan, you were, you know, mentioning, you know, not, in my head has been, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. And, uh, and, and I was thinking first that I really liked this, the slide that you had, Richard. Like, I thought that that was complete. And then as Alan was saying, and I thought, well, are those more strategies versus, you know, the vision? But I don't want that to just get...
And I'm wondering, I know we use equity frequently. As you indicated, it was the dominant word in the cloud. But what does it mean? How do we define it? I mean, how do we define it? How can one define, and how can one operationalize equity if there is no clear understanding consistently of what it is? So I assume at some point, uh, as we talk about closing the gap and racial, socioeconomic, I see special education, which could also speak to, uh, di-diverse groups, diversity. But what does equity mean within the context and framework of a strategic plan for the State Department of Ed? My question, that's it.
No, I, I think it is a brilliant question, and quite honestly, increasingly, educational organizations are defining that term and putting it explicitly into their plans so that there is a common vocabulary. I was simply trying to report back the language you were using and what you were saying. And it wasn't clear that you were, you were sharing certain common values, but I'm not sure you're sharing exactly, uh, common definitions for the word. And I think it probably would make sense to, to really develop a precise stance about what are we talking about when we say these, these words?
Yes, because I remember having a conversation with you about the differentiation between equality and equity, and how sometimes they tend to be rather interchangeable, but aren't. So, yeah, I think that's important, thank you.
And Estella, we see your lips moving. I don't know if you're talking to us or whether you're on another call, but you're on mute.
I'm sorry. When we did, when we chose equity, we had a definition of what equity meant. That took a long time, a lot of discussion, and a lot of, uh, of coming at what equity meant and not equality. So we were very much in, in, in agreement and sort of tried to put that definition in the plan, maybe it's not clear. My concern is really not to talk so much and make the mistake higher education made about access. Because higher education talk about access and then realize that it wasn't access, it wasn't inclusion, it is results. That equity has to be equated with results for all students. I'm not sure what that means, I don't know how to define it. But to me, that's the importance shift, that is not equity in the beginning, it's equity throughout, it's equity in the results. It's equity of allowing opportunities for the different types of students and pathways. That's where I would like to see, that's why I would like to see equity. So inclusive, inclusivity for me, it's no longer the word that I want to choose. For me, that's another, um, phase, a prior phase. For me, it's really the results-oriented type of school system that we support and we promote in Connecticut.
And, and so I appreciate your response, Estella, and specifically with your reference to higher education. However, we have moved forward models that begin with access and realize that it moves through completion. So it's providing, it's meeting students where they are and providing the frame and support to ensure that they move toward completion, whatever that is. It could be a certificate, it can be a diploma, but whatever it is, providing that support. And, and with respect to how we operationalize inclusion, the DEI component, which is now a huge part of the regional accreditation standards, it's ensuring that the effective and learning environment supports what we're doing and encourages students from diverse backgrounds. So just to add a little point of clarification from higher education. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other reactions, thoughts? Yes, Eric?
Yeah, I, I think if, if in fact, we are going to, uh, again, define equity as in, in this context, I think as it relates to your stakeholder, you know, when we get to stakeholders, maybe those who are experiencing inequity should define inequity, or, or should define equity. I, I don't know if it's our job to do so. I think those who have historically and continually experienced inequity, they should be the ones defining it for you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like what you said, Eric, because I'd be curious to see what a group of students and parents and educators, see? Like, again, one size doesn't fit all, right? What, how they define it? That's a good, that's a good, I'd be, I'd be, it'd be interesting for me to just find out what they're thinking, how they would define it, based on the world they live in.
Any other thoughts? Okay. Again, uh, we're not at a stage of having a vision. I'll make sure I'm really clear, these were just, uh, ideas that came out of your mouth when I interviewed you a few weeks ago and trying to bring them back to you and build on them. We're definitely going to engage stakeholders, we're going to try to deepen this conversation. We're going to try to, uh, see what emerges out of that. And then, and then in August, really, do some hard work of imposing some structure and order to it. But I'm hearing also, and, and I, and it goes into the next conversation, that we want to, we want to use some of that stakeholder engagement to help give us some insight on how to define equity and some other equity-adjacent words. And we want to make sure that those stakeholders who've experienced the, the, those phenomena are the ones who are helping to shape it, not folks on the other side of the power dynamic. Right? I think that makes quite a bit of sense, and we can have that opportunity, build that into the protocols. So I'm, I'm keep us moving, because I know you, you're, you've been at it, most of you have already been going eight or nine hours, and it's Friday at the end of the day, and I'm going to try to honor that and, and move us to, into our next part of the conversation. So I want to talk to you about, and this was the perfect transition that Eric gave us, talk a bit about, uh, next steps in stakeholder engagement. So the, there are two primary mechanisms that we're planning on using right now. One will be a, a broad survey. It will allow us to capture demographic information about who's filling it out. And it also allows people who maybe don't want to show up in a focus group opportunity or can't for some reason, or whatever, to have another opportunity that we can reach them. And in addition, so in that survey, the, the plan for both the survey and for the focus group protocols is to create a lot of space. And the protocols will do it, but in the focus groups, the facilitators will help do it. The questions are rather broad. So answer the questions and give us whatever seems important to them. I think it's, it's my experience, and I think it's the experience of focus group methodology in general, is that if you start these protocols too narrow, and you're asking people, well, what do you think about our definition of equity? Or what do you think about this as a vision? What do you think about these priorities? They're only reacting to your thinking, and therefore, their ideas and words aren't really their ideas and words. They're a lot, they might not even represent what's most important to them. So we're designing protocols that stay very broad. So what's your experience with the educational system? Tell us your, tell us the quality of your experience with the educational system. What are the things that, that, um, that we do well? What are the things we need to improve? It will follow some of the structure of what we've done so far. But now we can easily, can we can get down to the bottom, and we can, with certain groups, also tag on this. Help us define some words here that are floating around in the broader environment. We need your insight, and we can build that in. But I guess that what I'm, and, and I've done this for dozens of, of organizations, and I have a lot of confidence that constructed this way, we can get a large battery of insights and really have an understanding about, about how your stakeholders, cross stakeholders, and even within particular stakeholder groups, what seems important to them, what they're worried about, what they're excited about, where they want the state to go. But I'm, so I, I do have that confidence, but I also don't want that to be the end of the conversation. If there are specific questions that you really would like answers to, you want to make sure we don't miss the opportunity to, um, to get constituent groups to answer question X or question Y or question Z, I want to make sure that I hear that from you today so that we can build it into the survey and/or to the focus groups, or maybe particular focus groups, depending upon the nature of the question. So the question on the table now is, what else do you want to learn from your stakeholders as we embark on a process between now and the end of the summer to get some ideas and insights and perspectives? And again, we've got a couple of hands up. I've got Malia, and then Estella, and then Bob.
Thanks. Um, you know, it's, probably I'm not actually answering, I, I will guarantee that I'm not answering your question. But, but what come, what came to mind for me, and why I raised my hand, is that, you know, we do sit at this very interesting point in time, right? Where families and, well, everybody, right, is experiencing life in this COVID time. And I'm, I'm just curious, Richard, if you envision the focus groups, how would you, and, and maybe it doesn't need to be, but I'm just, I'm just envisioning a lot of sort of venting about the, this is what happened over the last year. And, and, you know, can we move people to a future? Right, do you understand what I'm saying?
Oh, no, it's a, it's a great question, and we actually have evidence just from last night. So last night, we ran a, a community event for Norwalk Public Schools in their strategic planning process, and had, uh, just tons of people. And it was all virtual. And we had eight or nine different constituent kind of types, and we had multiple groups within every group. And what we learned is that people were hungry to be heard, first foremost. They, they, um, they appreciated that people were thoughtfully asking them questions and, and carefully listening without defensiveness and out explaining them away. And that they, they really did possess the ability to talk about what the last year's been like, but to also talk more broadly. From student to parent to business leaders, to civic leaders, to educators, I, I think all of the facilitators were just kind of blown away because we walked in with that same question. Are people going to be so mired in what the last 12 months will been like? And it will only tell us that. And I think our impression is, it was pretty powerful, it was pretty big, and that we, we really worked on the protocol. We spent a couple of weeks getting it, getting it right, and we'll do the same thing for the state. But I'm confident we can get some really good perspective.
Right, thanks.
Um, I'll go next. Um, I'm interested in, in the asset model, in, instead of the deficit model. So what I would like for you to sort of get from people is what works? What is happening that really makes a difference? That we should, you know, go viral in, in Connecticut? We always talk about the, what's not working, the deficits, the, the bad. There's plenty of things that are working, even in the poorest districts, we're seeing great work. So that's what I would like to capture, you know, the highlights, the, the gems that are in this state. And, and how do we build on, on those gems?
I totally appreciate that, Estella. That's my discipline and, and like how I've been trained, my kind of ideology. And it's how we always start. Because if we ask the negative side first, that usually gobbles up all the energy. So the tactically, it makes sense to start there. But I do think there's a lot of stuff to do. Substantively, there are important things that we need to acknowledge. And, and then also create a little bit of space for things that haven't gone so well, so that people also can name the focus. Oh, no, if someone's getting a phone call in and that's not on mute, I'm not sure exactly what that's coming from, but I'm going to call on Bob. I think you were next up in the queue.
Yeah, I guess, what, I would like to find out is what the ideal state looks like. Yeah, what, when, you know, what do the, all the folks that you're going to ask from all these different perspectives, you know, what would it look like if it was really working well? What would it mean for our students? What would it mean for our state?
Thank you, Bob, brilliant idea. All of these are just fantastic. Aaron, what would you add to this? What questions do you want us to ask, or what insight do you have for us?
Well, I, I agree with Malia. The first thing I thought of is, um, you know, say these surveys were going out next week, all we would get back, in my opinion, is testing. Why are you testing? Why are you testing? What good is testing? And that's, we hear that. I'm not sure when these are going to start, the surveys. It's a little different. When we did this the last time, many of the surveys were done, and then the board saw some of them, well, saw the ones that were done. And then they reached out to other. I remember the big discussion over going out to the RSC, for example. We realized we were, we sort of got two sets of information that didn't make a lot of sense to us, and I, I think other board members properly recall. And then we went out to the RSC, and we came back at another meeting, and we went through that. So I do worry about that, that we have to find a way that we're not concentrating on March 2020 to March 2021. And funding, because I think that's going to roll into it too. Not our funding, the funding that we're getting, the federal funding. I, I think a lot of, we're going to get a lot from the community. You know, why did they, what, they don't need it? Why are they getting it? And that type of thing that, you know, because the general public really doesn't, they're not going to understand we're doing this for a five-year plan. They wouldn't, most general public wouldn't even know we had a five-year plan. So I think they'd be a little confused with, why are you doing this now? Don't you have other things to be concentrating on? That type of, I think, mindset for some of them, not all, like not, not certainly our students, I don't think our, our educators. I do think from some of our parent groups, we might get that. You've got to figure out how to do this better. Don't figure out what you're doing for five years, figure out how to do this better.
Well, I think that, uh, I think you're naming some really, um, comple, true complexities of this. I would add a whole nother one in, which we have fatigued people with surveys for the last 12 months. School districts have just sent barrages and barrages. So what do you need from home technologically? Are you sending your kid to school? What's your, how safe do you feel about coming back to school? Are you willing to fill out this paperwork? We have sent probably, um, four or five times the number of surveys home to, uh, to families to fill out. And, uh, and even to broader communities outside of, you know, the, the family groups. So I think we have to, we have to think really creatively about how to good, get good data. I do think that especially, you know, our, our bet is that the survey was going to give us a foundation, and it's really going to be in the focus groups that we can suss out what's really going on and what is about short-term, what is about longer-term. Because in focus groups, you can say, tell me more about that statement, as opposed to, on a Likert scale from one to seven, what... As opposed to on a Liker scale from one to seven, what do you feel? Right, that, that it's harder, you can ask for the comments, but usually that follow-up point of the um, that follow-up point of the survey after a Liker scale, the, the percentage of people who answer that question versus the Liker scale just drops down dramatically. Focus groups give you a whole lot of insights. So I think we're, we're imagining a um, a, a blend of some in person once people are vaccinated and feel comfortable only among the constituent groups who really want to, but some will really want to. And some that are virtual and try to reach as many people as we can. And uh, and, and be able to keep, keep asking and keep probing and keep uh, going past. And I also think that the upside of a face-to-face experience, even if it's virtual, is much greater than the upside of a survey. People fill out a survey, they even forget they filled out the survey. People have an experience when they show up with eight or nine other people and talk big about where should the education system go? Or what would the ideal state be? Like, people would love talking about that. And I think people will feel more vested on the other side of this if we really capitalize. So I think we have to use the survey as another, but I think all those things you're saying, Erin, are real key challenges for us.
Yeah, and I like how Bob said too, that, you know, to start off with, you know, what would you like it to look like? Um, I attended a student panel just a couple of days ago. And that question was asked of the students and it was very interesting to see. I, I served on a panel with Kim Traverso from the state last, I don't know when it was, June, like before the end of that last year's school um, closed. And the difference I see now, when you saw these students ask that question, you know, what would you like your education to look like? Um, it was interesting, you know, to get to Don's point. We can't go with that premise that all these kids didn't like the way they were taking, you know, using school this year. We really can't do that because even some of our best and brightest, you know, three or four kids said, hey, I'm a, I'm a better planner. I'm more independent, I'm more responsible than I ever was before in my entire life. Who, you know, I was shocked to hear kids talk like that. Um, but that's what we want them to be. So it was, it was interesting to hear them. And I, so to approach, you know, surveys and discussions that way, I think would be very helpful. Or like in Malia's point, we're gonna get a lot of, you know, not what we just went through.
Yeah, exactly. So Awilda, you want to add to this?
Yes, and I, and I'm gonna be short and sweet because I know I've got three after me. Um, but you kind of addressed my question, Richard. I was gonna ask you before I just gave you brief my summary. How are you going to conduct these surveys and focus groups? Were they gonna be virtual? Were they gonna be online? Were they gonna be, you're gonna distribute them across the schools, educators? I, that was my first question.
So, uh, and you wanna, you wanna put all the questions out there or do you want me to?
Yes, and then, yes. So then my second part of, my second part of the what do I want to get out of this? Richard, you mentioned earlier, learning experiences of students, right? You mentioned activities divorced from outcomes. So I like to see um, an opportunity for where are everybody involved in this survey that's providing us input? It's taking the time because like you said, we're overwhelmed with so many surveys. I mean, constantly, that there's, that we could address the progress. Address the progress so that we can use this assessment tool, these surveys, to be able to provide better resources for our, for our, everybody involved. Our schools, our families and our children and our communities. That's all I have to say.
Agreed. I, I'll try to give you a quick answer to your first, we're, our, and to build on what I had already answered. We're gonna try to do a both and strategy. Like we're, we're gonna try every way we can to reach people in a way they feel comfortable. So we're, we've got target groups that we're gonna make sure that we sample and get. And then we're also do all calls. And when we're gonna invite people, if, if you are interested in being a part of, sign up. And then we'll reach out and we'll tap people on the shoulders. So we're gonna, we're gonna try everything that we can to get a lot of participation. We want to get to a place where we, we, we reach what qualitative researchers call saturation. Where we no longer are surprised by any idea because we've heard everything. And we also want to get to a place where we can say, not just for symbolic purposes, but for substantive reasons, we really did hear the state. This, this plan represents the will of the people and we're excited about pushing it forward. And we're trying to do both of those things. So we're gonna, we're gonna be really aggressive and Keith and I have talked a bit about that already. And there, there, there's a, uh, I think there's a lot we can do. And thankfully, we've run, you, you get to benefit from some of the experiments we've run with districts that we've been working with through the pandemic, where we've done an entire strategic plan uh, in a virtual setting. So we've learned quite a bit about how to get stakeholders involved and engaged and have very thoughtful dialogue with them that doesn't just get mired down in the last 12 months.
Well, well, thank you.
Uh, Don Harris?
Thank you, Richard. You know, you asked um, what sort of questions um, or what that you would be asking the stakeholders? I, I, you know, our stakeholders are very concerned about the education of our children. But I think they are equally concerned about the landscape of the country. And, and just where we are, you know, uh, we spent a lot of time talking about the past year with COVID. Yep, that's been, that's been a problem. But also they're thinking about George Floyd. They're thinking about Breonna Taylor. They're thinking about January 6th in the nation's capital. They're thinking about the shootings in Atlanta and the, and the shootings in Boulder, Colorado. And, you know, they're just wondering, is it coming here to my child, my child's school? Um, you know, education is not just that nine to three program anymore. You know, there's, there's a whole lot of other things going on. And I think it would surprise me if you didn't get a lot of uh, a lot of those responses back from the stakeholders. Um, because that's, and the people I talk to, that's what they're concerned about.
I agree and we have some, we have some evidence of that too. So I, I, thank, thank you for the, the kind of counsel on that. I, I definitely agree. Uh, Martha?
Um, I had gone back to this vision slide that you had. Um, and I think I would like to make sure that we have questions, sorry, um, about attainment. Both, you know, coming from the first parent's perspective, what are they planning? What, what is, you know, what is on their horizon? What do they think is out of reach or whatever the questions may be? Um, I really, you know, equity and attainment are two big words. Um, and however we can attack a payment and then we can get valuable data um, to make, you know, decisions for all sorts, from all sorts of angles. And then the other thing I was thinking about making sure we want to capture is as we, as you go through different groups, you know, um, we're gonna talk about parents. The parents who are in a thick of whatever, second grade, have, will have different experiences about early childhood, recent early childhood versus, um, versus the parents of high schoolers or recent graduates. Um, you know, I would love to know, I'm sure there's, you know, parents of who, um, like Awilda's working with, right? Who are products of, recent products of the system. And they can give really good feedback about what went well and what didn't go well. Um, so capturing the, the different viewpoints where, and they're matters of kind of expertise because I just lived it. And then also the ones um, who have the hi, the benefit of hindsight and the time to reflect and said, oh, if I did it again, I really would have pursued those charter schools or technical program or whatever.
Totally agree that the, being able to look at what's driving people's experiences and the variation of different, um, a different people in the focus groups based upon where they are in the system and their relationship to it. I, I totally appreciate that. Bob, sir, what do you, what do you have for us?
Yeah, I just kind of, you know, reflecting, you were, we've talked a lot about how this was a different year and how children learn differently. And some of the answers have been different than one might expect. That it was good for some kids and not good for others. Um, I, I guess the, the other thing that I, I, I saw last year, for this past year, is the State Department of Education's, in, at least from my perspective, seemed to be much more involved in the process of education in the state. Not that they haven't been before, but they were providing guidance on how to deal with the pandemic. Uh, you know, the, the rapidly changing landscape. And not, not asking them the question, was that helpful? Uh, but asking the question, if you look at, you know, given all the, all the uh, time and energy that the department invested in education and keeping everybody safe this year, would that same type of involvement be helpful in closing this gap? In addressing the education in the state? You know, do they, you know, sometimes you get the feeling that some of the, some of the uh, the districts feel like they're, you know, like on an island by themselves and they could use some help. And uh, is, is that something that they really are looking for?
Okay, we'll add that in. Anything else? See if you've uh, these are fantastic insights and uh, and areas of inquiry that we can build in. Definitely don't want to close it off too quickly if there's anyone else who wants to provide us some counsel. Okay, so I'm going to bring up one last slide for us. And that one is some next steps. So uh, I will be working with Keith rather soon. We don't have a date on the calendar, but I imagine we'll be texting each other within seconds at the end of the, of this meeting. And we will be, oh, we'll set up a time to work together to finalize the stakeholder engagement plan. Uh, and then it, it, in some timetable that allows us to administer, gather good data, organize, recruit for, facilitate the focus groups in waves and in different parts of the state. And then uh, generate a, a report, all so that we can come back to you in August. There's a timetable that I think got hammered out a long time ago. I think it was before, um, before even Keith and I really were kind of working on the final details. There was a structure to this that had been proposed. And uh, so I, I, what I would say is if you as a board want me to come to a board meeting, if you want to have an additional retreat at any point, do not hesitate. Let me know, let Keith know. And I, I, was that expression they used in the White House? I serve at the pleasure of the board. So if, if there is anything you need uh, between now and August, I'm gonna make sure you get it. And uh, and if, if there is nothing in addition to it, then in August, in that retreat, hopefully together, hopefully for a whole day and hopefully in person, we'll be looking at those findings, but rather quickly trying to turn them into something. What do these findings tell us about a small number of priority areas for the state? What did the, what does it tell us about the language we need to start using? What does it tell us about how to articulate a compelling vision about where the, of where the state should go? And I really look forward to that conversation. I, I, as I said at the beginning, I just uh, had such a delightful time talking to you individually. And it's been, uh, it's been joyful today, but I really look forward to being in the room and, and really being able to analyze because I know that you've said it in the interviews. Many of you were very interested in what members around the state were saying and you, you echoed that today. So those are, are the kind of the most logical next steps. There are some micro steps that have to happen. But I wanted to check in with you and see, is there anything else you want me to add to that list? As, as your um, as your counsel in this to help you? Not from a legal perspective, but just in terms of consulting perspective. Is there anything else you need me to do for you to make sure that we move this process along well? And that we get to the end destination in a good place? Keith, this is my favorite time to not have a response. It's when they're not adding any more things on to the table. But I know that Keith and I will create a long list of extra things.
Absolutely will.
So Karen, what, what else do we need to be considering as you go forward?
Just, I, I just want to rea- reiterate, I'm sure this is already part of the pliny, but just really sort of over, over sampling and, and, and making extra effort to get those voices heard that are, that are um, not typically the first ones um, to respond to the focus group or the, or the survey in multiple languages, um, in flexible, in really flexible ways so that we really just seek to sort of over-sample where we, where we know we have in the past under, uh, you know, not, not heard the voice strongly yet.
I couldn't, couldn't echo, I couldn't agree more. And we're gonna do that from a technical point of view. We've also learned that uh, when we partner, when we work with and through community-based organizations, we have a lot of success bringing in voices to the table as opposed to direct, kind of a direct contact approach. And we're planning on that, but I, I, I keep pushing us because that's my aspiration and we're gonna, we're gonna deliver for you. Martha?
Um, are, are state legislators un, involved on, in, in any of the plans? As some of the people to be asking?
So Keith, would you mind commenting on the, so we, we're planning on bringing in legislators if they want to be involved in focus groups and, and filling out the survey. In addition to that, are, are there any other mechanisms in place through which we were briefing any of the key legislators on the Ed, Ed Committee? Or anything from the State Department? Because typically the State Department's kind of managing that relationship and, and, and making sure they understand and also managing the relationship with the governor's office.
Right, and I'll be working through Laura Stephan um, in managing those relationships with the legislature and the office of the governor.
So we'll make sure that we include them in the process and we'll make sure that we're briefing along the way so that there are no surprises. We're, they're informing it, but we're also not blindsiding anybody from a, from a political and a substantive process. Okay, so here's the final conversation and it's an easy one. I asked you to begin with how are you feeling back at one o'clock? And I asked you, how are you feeling in a sentence or less? I'm asking you now as an exit slip because we're finishing 45 minutes early if we do this quickly. I'm asking you, how are you feeling today at the close of this meeting? Again, in a sentence or less. And I'm gonna invite, um, I'm gonna invite Malia to start us off and to call the first person. Again, and you have to model for us, Malia. No one's gonna suffer paragraphs now. Everybody wants one sentence or less. How are you feeling at the close of this meeting?
While I am feeling more tired, um, I am also feeling in good hands.
Call upon somebody else for us?
I will, um, Karen?
Thank you. Um, I'm feeling like you have a huge task in front of you and um, still excited about being a part of it. And I will turn it to Bob.
I am uh, very excited and uh, I, I really like the way you're going about doing this. And uh, I'm really excited to hear what you find out. And I want to go to Jane.
And I was thinking about it. I am optimistic but very curious to see what the results are and then what action we take. And so I will go to Don.
I am excited. Uh, I'm feeling a lot better than, than I was feeling at one o'clock. Not because we're ending early, but because I, I, I think we're embarking on, on some good stuff. And uh, so I'm looking forward to um, being a part of this whole presentation. And I will go to Woody.
I feel excited and stimulated and hopeful. And uh, I'll ask Awilda.
Oh, Woody, thank you. Richard, I, I want to thank you because um, I, I feel um, it's a privilege that I get to know my colleagues and that we have things in common and that's important. And that's important because you said earlier that, um, we didn't get a chance to get to know each other, especially I coming in a- along with a few other of my friends. Um, so I, I feel, um, that it's, it gave me the opportunity to get to know how others are thinking. And the bottom line is we have so many things in common. So I have to, I appreciate that. It's all about our students and our families and educators. Thumbs up. And I'm going to pass it on to Bonnie.
So I'm still feeling excited about ending my week with a group of people who are as passionate and as, as intensely engaged with education. And, uh, looking forward to the survey results. And I'm going to pass it to Erin.
I too am excited. And Richard, I too, uh, thank you very much for this. Um, especially this great opportunity to finally come together as a full board and have some really great discussions that we just haven't been able to do for over a year. So I truly appreciate that.
And exactly.
I forgot to pass it off. Um, Estella.
Thank you, thank you. I, I, I really like, like my colleagues, I really feel delighted. And I believe, I truly believe that what Malia started us with, that we should need, we need to have a, a vision that is exciting and, and, um, inspirational, that we can achieve that. So I'm going to pass it to Eric.
I think he had to leave.
I think he's gone. Yeah, he had to leave. He sent us an email, uh, well, in the chat.
You're on mute again, Estella.
Uh, who's left? Um?
It's Martha?
No, she.
Um, she, um.
I can go.
I'm sorry, um, Estella, Martha's available.
Uh, I'm feeling confident. Um, I thought this was a really great session today. Uh, thank you to our facilitator and all the other board members for the great discussion and the focus that we seem to have, at least at this point. I appreciate that. And I think I can pass it to Chair Taylor.
I'm feeling almost nostalgic, I suppose. This whole afternoon has reminded me about why it has been such a pleasure and inspiration to be on this board. And I hope I will get to continue for another couple of years. And I don't know who's left to be called on, so.
I think that's everyone.
I think that's it. I, I'm just going to ask if Keith, do you have any final words for us? You're, you're a key player in this and you've been watching and, and, uh, but you're, you're, you're my partner in crime, I feel like, in partnership with the State Department. Any, anything you want to share or any other thoughts you want to leave us with?
I would just like to thank everybody for their time and their commitment, not only to Four Hours on a Friday, but to the generous time you've offered to Richard and your personal conversations. I think that it was a fantastic way to start this process. And your thoughts, uh, that you shared with Richard were invaluable. And I look forward to the next 15 months, um, of working with you all to create just a spectacular document that's forward-thinking, uh, for our students in Connecticut. And, uh, please reach out to me, uh, if there's anything that I can do for you.
And I'll say before I hand it to, uh, Estella, to, to the formal proceedings, whatever maneuvers you need to do, is to say it, an absolute joy. I knew I would enjoy this afternoon, even late on a Friday. And, and it far surpasses my expectations. So I, I look forward to, uh, serve, uh, stewarding your vision and your work through this. Uh, it, it has been a real honor. And, uh, Estella, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, uh, Richard, and thank you Keith for organizing this, um, aim, eh, retreat that really worked in spite of the fact that there was no food, although when we all came back, everybody was eating. You know, I saw everybody was eating. But it was really, really, um, valuable and, and, uh, gives us a sense of purpose of where we're headed. And Richard, my, my only concern is when you do the, the stakeholders, um, interviews and, and surveys and all, if you hear anything that is dissonant with our values, that you made us aware. You know, we're so, again, we are very much, um, share the same values. But if there's any disconnect that we need to be aware of, rather than fight it to, to acknowledge it and to sort of deal with it, that would be, um, that, that should be very important because you, you are going to, to be talking to many people and that's, um, that's critical. So again, thank you so much and Keith, and thank you to my fellow board members. And I'm going to fly back to, um, Connecticut. I was looking at flights and it's as, as expensive as going to Europe. But I'm going to be there April 7th, hopefully, and see all of you who can make it to the meeting. And, um, again, thank you so much for this afternoon. And Richard, thank you for ending earlier. So I, we all appreciate it, so.
Estella, if, uh, if, if Charlene Lean is on, uh, can we hear from her?
I don't think Charlene is on, right Keith? I think she left.
She had another meeting to attend.
Okay.
Yeah, but, uh, Keith, chat and thank her on our behalf, okay?
Absolutely.
I like you also. Uh, you know, I would invite you to lunch if we were, you know, we could do it, so.
Absolutely. I look forward to having lunch with you again.
Okay. Thank you. Take care and goodbye.